Here, he said I could answer for him.
Alderman, when? Alderman Wilson.
Here.
Alderman Holmes.
Here.
Alderman Tindham.
Here.
Alderman Grover.
Here.
Alderman Rainey.
Here.
Alderman Burrus.
Here.
Alderman Fisk.
Here.
We have a quorum, nine to zero.
There are nine people present, we have a quorum. Welcome to the Monday, September 13th meeting of the Evanston City Council. First on our agenda is the United Way Award presentation.
Yes, and Madam Mayor, we have Alex Rovita from United Way North Shore to make a presentation to you.
Good evening, I promise I'll make this quick because I know you have a packed agenda, but the city of Evanston was one of our top five supporters across the North Shore at United Way in 2009, thanks to the support of Mayor Tisdale, the council, Wally. It's been fantastic. And the staff, of course, of course. They more than doubled their campaign this year, and we're heading into a new campaign with great momentum. So here's the top award for 2009. Hopefully there'll be one for 2010. We are kicking off the community-wide campaign here at the Civic Center on September 29th at 2:00 PM. We are also going to coordinate a Day of Caring, which is a volunteer event, on October 16th, which is a Saturday, with the Evanston Community Foundation and Northwestern in the city, of course, so residents and employees, you are all invited. And lastly, I want to quickly plug, we're having a food drive September 20th to 24th, and we're going to have a collection box at the city, at the Civic Center, and at the high school, and at District 65 also, and probably a few other Evanston organizations. So please donate and spread the word. Pantries are at an all-time low this year, it's really important, and once again, I want to thank everyone for the great support that you've given us across the city, and for all the great work that you do to make Evanston the great community it is. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And next, we are very lucky to have Joshua Raw, an Evanston resident, who is going to lead us out of the wilderness on pensions. Mr. Raw received his PhD in 2004 from MIT with his dissertation, "Pensions: Corporate Finance and Public Policy," which won him the 2004 National Tax Association Dissertation Award. He is currently at Kellogg, and I called him cold and asked for help, and here he is, as all Evanstonians come to the call of the city, and I very much appreciate your being here tonight. Pensions are our biggest problem, and we'd appreciate any help you can give us.
Thanks, Mayor Tisdale. It's a pleasure to be here to discuss this critical issue. What I'm going to do is I'm going to give a financial perspective on police and fire pensions in the city of Evanston. And first, I'm going to start with just a little bit of background. This is the 50 U.S. states, and what this shows here, this is all states together, and the reason why I'm starting out with this is I want to show that Evanston is not alone in its problems. These are state pensions that I'm showing you here, and this is the amount of annual money that the state pension funds of all the 50 states combined are going to owe pensioners going forward. And I have three lines here that I like to talk about. There's the blue line, the dashed red line, and the purple line. The blue line is what the state governments would owe if all of the pensions were immediately frozen today, meaning that all defined benefits that people had earned up until now would just be fixed based on today's levels of service and salary. The red line is the way that the pensions are commonly accounted for, using government accounting standards. And the purple line is what is actually expected to happen if the systems are run forward. So the actual expectation is that by 2040, states in aggregate are going to be paying out $500 billion per year in pension benefits. Okay, let's narrow it down a little bit more here, just the Illinois state funds, okay? So this is again in the context of Evanston, we are not alone. This is the state employee retirement system, the teachers' retirement system of Illinois, and the state university retirement systems. And here, what we see is that for the state of Illinois, if immediate action were taken today and all pensions were frozen at their current levels, then Illinois as a state would still owe about, well, as of about 2030, about $12.5 billion annually in pension payments. If nothing is done, and the plans are run forward, then Illinois as a state is going to be paying over $20 billion annually in pension payments. $20 billion, the state of Illinois only takes in roughly $30 billion annually in revenues. So this is what we've been waiting for to see. Well, what does this look like for the city of Evanston? Okay? Well, if Evanston froze all of its pension plans today, meaning that we told all police and fire, this is police and fire, all police and fire employees that their pensions would be frozen at today's level of service and salary, then Evanston would still be on the hook for what amounts to cash flows of over $20 million annually by the late 2020s. The way we currently account for it is shown in the red line, but really, the interesting thing is what would happen if we do nothing? If we just do nothing and run this forward, then just for current employees, the city of Evanston is going to owe over $45 billion annually by the year 2040. Forty-five billion, no, $45 million annually by the year, it's always going to be million, yes. $45 million annually by the year 2040, okay? And now, we do have some assets set aside in funds, so we have $115 million in these funds roughly, but you can see that that is not going to last very long, and so that is the situation that we are in. Okay, so there's an issue of how is this presented in city accounts? We dutifully follow the Government Accounting Standards Board procedures, where we discount using expected returns on the assets in our plan. And the good news is that we are a little bit more prudent than, say, our state plans. So our state plans, in Illinois, they're discounting at an eight-and-a-half percent return. The city of Evanston is discounting a 7% return. What I'm showing you here is for different, promises of different maturities, meaning how many years in the future is the promise. What you really need to be using, though, and we can't really blame any city or state government for this, because the Government Accounting Standards Board stipulates these procedures that everyone is using, but what really needs to be used is a riskless rate, okay? And the reason for that is not because I don't think it's likely that probably by taking on some risk in our pension funds, we could earn a little bit more than, say, you know, the 2.6% yield on a 10-year treasury. It's because the only way that we earn more than the risk-free rate is by taking on risk in these pension funds, and it's risk for which future taxpayers bear the downside. So people say to me, "Look, what's wrong with these Government Accounting Standards Board rules?" I mean, Evanston has probably earned about 7% historically over the last 20 years, so what's wrong with just looking at these things as being, you know, the cost is 7%? Well, the problem is, is that what we're doing there is we are assuming that that 7% was earned without taking on any risk, and that it will be earned in the future without taking on any risk. And that is impossible, because the only way that the 7% is going to be achieved in a context where bonds yield 2.5% or 3% is by taking on substantial risk in these funds, and that's risk for which our kids bear the downside. So if I'm trying to explain this to my kids, I would say they're a little too young to understand this stuff. Yeah, they're three and one. But what I would be saying to them is, well, what we're doing is, we've promised these pensions, and we're not going to put aside the money to pay for them now. What we're going to do is we're going to invest in the stock market, okay? And if the stock market goes south, which will, by the way, be in the same kind of situation as like your college fund goes south, and like any savings we have to help you out later goes south, in that situation, we're going to be calling on you to raise, to increase your taxes and give us more money. Is that all right? And I think that what you want to ask to realize is that doing this, we are basically just borrowing from our kids, that's pretty much it. There are all kinds of ways I could explain how crazy these rules are. You know, here's the way the rule, you know, the idea that you could use a 7% or an eight-and-a-half, 7% return, it would be the following. Suppose you were underwater on your house, you thought that you owed more on your mortgage than your house was worth, and you had a little bit of savings set aside, a couple thousand dollars, you had some savings. You know, what these government rules say is that if you invest the savings in stocks, you get to pretend that your mortgage is not as burdensome, because, oh, the stocks are going to earn 11% annual returns. It is completely nonsensical, you know, and within the sort of, I'm an economist by training, I teach at Northwestern, at Kellogg, and this is not something that finance people or economists have much disagreement about. So we are really understating how expensive these plans are. And let me give you the numbers, okay? So if you read the Evanston reports, you have, they say that the total, if I add up the police and fire, I get the total liabilities are about $296 million. Million dollars, $296 million. We've done some work, my colleague and I, to replicate these numbers. We got $291 million, we're within rounding error of this $290 and $96 million, but, so that's the first number. But what happens if we discount this, if we really treat this the way it should be, the way that a financial market participant would treat it? The way that insurance company would treat it, if Evanston went to an insurance company and said, "We want to pay, you know, we want to pay you to take over these pension obligations." How much would you charge? Well, they're going to charge $420 million if we agree that all the pension plans are going to be frozen today, and they're going to charge $524 million, that's half a billion dollars, if we run the system forward and make some assumptions about using these kind of common actuarial methods. Even that is actually really an understatement of what they would charge us if we were going to run the systems forward, because it relies on some actuarial details, I won't get into the nitty-gritty. What does that mean in terms of unfunded liabilities? Well, if you read the reports, and this is based on the 2010 information that came out in draft form in July, you know, the state is 175, or the city, rather, is $175, $176 million in the red. But really, what we are, if we eliminate this fictitious government accounting, which I, you know, how much can we really blame ourselves, because we're just following the rules? We're really $300 to $400 million in the red here with these pensions. The $300 million would be how in the red we would be if we froze all of the pension plans today. The $400 million is how in the red we would be if we considered that we're running them forward, and we use the standard actuarial procedure for doing it. In point of fact, true expected benefits are actually much higher than that. So this is a very heavy burden for the city, needless to say, you know, and I think the question that we have to ask is, how long do we have before we have to act? And the answer is that it depends upon a number of things, including how much we continue to contribute, and what kind of returns we get. Currently, the assets in Evanston's pension funds are sufficient to pay for benefits through about 2020 if we earn a 7% return, through 2019 if we earn a 5% return. However, since we hired the new actuary who told us that we needed to be contributing more, still not what an economist would say you have to contribute, we've been making some progress, and if we keep contributing at these rates that we've been contributing now, we actually could extend this out to the mid-2030s if we get 5% returns, and to the early 2040s if we get 7% returns. So Mayor Tisdale asked me if there was going to be even a glimmer of hope, that's my glimmer of hope, if we keep contributing at this rates. We actually do have until the mid-2030s or the early 2040s before the pension funds run out, okay? So, and this, by the way, I should say I give a lot of these talks for a lot of state governments around the country, increasingly more with some cities, and I have to say that the fact that we are contributing, that we contributed 8.9 million for police and 7 million for fire, if we keep doing that, we can postpone, we can kick the can down the road for a little longer, okay? Which may be in the situation the best that we can hope to do. So the summary then, how do we put this 300 million, I said the true amount in the red we are is 300 million at bare minimum, if we froze all the plans now, we'd be 300 million under. How do you put that into context? Well, there are 30,000 families in Evanston, so that's $10,000 per household, okay? I think most of us don't really just have that sitting around. And Evanston households are also on the hook for their share of the Illinois state plans, which I wrote in editorial in the Tribune recently, is $42,000 per family. So we've got that problem. And, you know, we can postpone the day of reckoning with continued contribution increases and strong returns, if we wanted to be financially responsible. Now, I'm going to use a big "if" there, if we wanted to be financially, because I'm not even sure, in this situation, the financial responsibility is the right thing to do. Because the fact is that there are many other municipalities, Chicago is much worse off than we are. And if we continue to be financially responsible, then Chicago is going to go bankrupt and get big bailout money that we're not going to get. Now, in good faith, I can't really recommend that we not be financially responsible, but the fact of the matter is that there is a question there. If there's federal, state, or federal bailout money to be had, then I, you know, one has to think about this. So essentially, if we wanted to do the right thing and be fiscally responsible, in the face of others not doing the right thing, we would have to do two things. First, we would have to stop the growth of the unfunded liabilities. There are only two ways to do that. One is to move to a defined contribution plan for all future work, not removing any benefits that people have already earned. The other is running a new tier of a DB plan, defined benefit plan, where we actually fund at the risk-free rate. Those are the only ways to stop the growth of unfunded liabilities. That would be a pretty substantial increase in our costs. After that, we're still left with the $10,000 per family, and we'd have to figure out how we're going to split that up among current taxpayers, future taxpayers, and city employees and other creditors of the city. And I think that when you think about the possibilities there, if we were actually to take some, make fundamental reforms, stop the growth of unfunded liabilities, there would be a scope to be able to borrow in capital markets over a long period of time. And in fact, that is what I generally propose that state and local governments should do, that they should stop the growth of unfunded liabilities, either through moving to 401K-type plans, or through moving to a defined benefit plan where you actually fund using risk-free rates, which both these, that could be very expensive, but the fact is that we're not, we're promising things now that we're not paying for, and we've got to stop running that up. And once we do that, I think we would find that in capital markets, we'd be able to borrow for a long, you know, for long horizons, to be able to deal with this $10,000 per household. But I think the situation is not good. I think we can't really blame ourselves too much, because we've been following Government Accounting Standards Board procedures. And again, you know, if we go back to the very beginning, that was the last slide I had, but just bear with me for a second, if I go back to the very beginning, and I show you, you know, what's going on nationally, the same problem is had in all state governments, it's being borne out in Illinois, and this is what we're seeing in Evanston. So I mean, the question is, how are we going to come up with $45 million annually in, you know, by 2040? That's going to be a difficult challenge for the city to face. So I'm sorry to be the bearer of bad news, but again, it could be worse, because in fact, in Chicago, if you split it up, it's more like $20,000 per household, and the Illinois funds are considerably worse off than we are as well. So that's the state of affairs in Evanston pension land from a finance perspective. Are you taking questions?
That was the glimmer of hope.
The glimmer of hope was that, in fact, because many other cities actually don't have the ability to extend it to 2035 or 2040 by maintaining current contribution levels. So that was the glimmer of hope, yeah.
Thank you, I didn't want to miss my glimmer.
Okay.
Do the aldermen have questions first? All right, go right ahead.
I missed it. What is the risk-free rate of return?
Well, it's the yield on a treasury bond, okay? Which actually, this is it on the right-hand side here, this is the latest treasury yields, okay? Treasury strips, which is, it's basically very close to the treasury yield, and, you know, in some ways, those rates are actually, in fact, too high, because we actually promised cost-of-living adjustments as well, and the treasury does not have that.
As an expert, clearly, could you come up with one number that would be reasonable? And I think these people would probably benefit from that as well. But you also might consider, what I think of doing in my own stuff, is a reasonable rate of return. 7%, given what I look at, and I presume what you look at, is ridiculous. That ain't going to happen.
Yeah.
I'm not sure that 5% is going to happen, to be real.
Yeah.
I suspect somewhere on the order of 4%, 4.5% might be reasonable with minimal risk. Could you comment on that, please?
You know, I would say that, you know, it's going to vary based on the interest rate environment that we're in, and I have to tell you, though, I travel around the world and I speak in Europe about this, they actually laugh at us for even thinking about it this way, because they say, "Look, you know, the only way you get more than the risk-free rate is by taking on risk, and you're making your kids pay for the downside. So you should just be using risk-free rates." That's what, you know, you travel to places that actually do the accounting right. Now, within the framework of, within the flawed framework of the way we think about this, you know, I would say, for now, okay, 4% is higher than the rate on any, the yield on any one of these durations of the treasury, it's more than the 30-year treasury. So I, you know, I don't know how, I'm not sure I'm the one to be able to make the decision as to how much risk is okay for our kids to bear. I'm not sure I want to be the one to do that, but if you used 4%, it would certainly be a step in the right direction.
Okay, so we could start thinking, if 7% is served, 5% is served, we're down to somewhere around 3.5. 4% that might conceivably, if we invest correctly, would be reasonably prudent. And I understand about risk, absolute risk.
Sir, sir, I'm sorry. People are on television, can't hear you, so.
That's all right.
Okay.
And I've said what I needed to say.
Thank you very much.
Alderman Grover?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Professor Raw, very much for taking the time to come tonight and put together a realistic presentation of our pension future. I would love for, if Professor Raw lets us put the presentation on the website, or at least get copies of it for council, if there's a way to do that.
Sure.
And my interest is in, obviously, then, the follow-up policy questions. What are the policies that get us to where we want to be with a secure pension future?
Well, the.
Where do we start?
I'm going to go to the end, and I, you know, I think that the question is, I have to be, you know, upfront about this, I mean, there is an argument to be made that, so think about it this way, during the housing crisis, people who, taxpayers who were fiscally responsible, and, you know, stayed within their means on housing, have ended up, to some extent, bailing out taxpayers who were not as responsible. And I think we have to ask ourselves, we do honestly have to ask ourselves, should we take dramatic action now in order to forge a fiscally responsible course, or should we throw a lot in with all the other municipalities that are in the same situation as we are? So I need to put that right up front. Now, if we've decided that we want to forge a fiscally responsible course in the face of, you know, most other, I mean, all these state funds that are failing, and so many other municipal funds that are having trouble, then, again, it has two steps. You know, the first step is to stop the growth of unfunded liabilities, and the, you know, the one surefire way to do that is not a politically popular way, but it is to freeze the promises that have been made currently to public employees based on current levels of service and salary, and to compensate for future work for retirement using a 401K-type plan. That is one surefire way to stop the growth of unfunded pension liabilities. Alternatively, you know, as a compromise, I would be pleased with seeing a defined benefit pension fund that was funding to a rate like 4%, although what it really should be is just the treasury yield curve, which is, you know, 3.5% at 30 years. So that would be, you know, that's kind of the first phase, and then the second phase is, we still have the $10,000 per household, even if we freeze those plans, and that's just a question of, what do you do with $10,000 per household of debt? And I think there, what you do in that situation is, I think we have to sit down and have a difficult conversation about who is going to share in that, you know, and I think that one thing that's certainly going to have to happen is that we would, once we froze, if we did, you know, freeze the plans or stop the growth of unfunded liabilities by using a low rate, we would be borrowing in capital markets to try to pay for the $10,000 per household, and spread it out over a very long period of time. We would also see taxes increased and/or spending cut, and/or we'd be asking employees, you know, we'd be, you know, potentially trying to change parameters of the pension plans like cost-of-living adjustments. But I personally, you know, my view, and this is a view, and this is something that can be discussed, is that, you know, once we've sort of said to our public servants, this is what you're going to get, it's difficult, it's, you know, is it something we want to do to actually try to go back on that? And I don't know, I think the question is, this $10,000 per household, and it's up to the citizens of Evanston to decide whether that's something they want to try to do, and, you know, in the context of the Illinois Constitution, I think it's extremely difficult to do that. So I think that you really have to think of the $10,000 per household as being pretty much, that's debt that's out there, we've promised it to our public servants, and we're going to have to find a way of paying for it, either through increased taxes, reduced spending, or borrowing capital markets to spread it out over a very long period of time. So that would be having future taxpayers pay for it. So none of those are political, you know, kind of things that people generally like to think about politically, having our taxes raised, having our spending cut, we're already in a crunch, asking public employees whether, you know, we can get pension reductions relative to things that have already been promised, despite constitutional guarantees. There's also our other debt out there that we could try to restructure with our creditors, but we also don't want to do that either. So none of the options is politically very popular, but that, we're just in a situation where we owe $10,000 per household, and how are we going to deal with that? Those are the only ways you get out, you deal with debt.
Alderman Wilson?
Again, thank you very much, I really appreciate this. Losing the microphone. Appreciate your time and the information. But, and I think, you know, one of the lessons we have to learn here is that we have to be doing something differently, and we need to get past the inherent attitude that I think a lot of people continue to carry with us, that someone will bail us out, something will change, something will happen, and you can't continue to operate with that attitude. Otherwise, things will continue to get worse, and they're not going to get better. And my suggestion is, we have a lot of people here tonight for a lot of reasons, we have a lot of people watching for a lot of reasons, and on a regular basis, people ask me for things that they want to have happen in Evanston. They want certain things funded, they want certain things paid for, they want certain things allocated for. And what I often tell people is that the first email or call you should make is to somebody in Springfield, because if you want money available to do the things that you want to do here, we have to make sure that we have the ability on a long-term basis to be able to do what we want to do here. And the first and biggest step is, to me, is addressing this pension situation, because this is not going to go away. This is a very, very substantial problem. We're locked in, in so many ways. We're told what to do. We didn't choose to do this. There have been decisions over a period of time, based on actuarial assumptions that were represented, were going to be, you know, accurate, appropriate. But I agree with the professor. You know, we, not, for the most part, the council, he was here, but over a period of time, we as a community have chosen to, you know, push the bill off into the future, and at some point, we have to be accountable, and the point, I think, is today.
Yeah, I just want to add real quickly, just, I'm sure everybody knows this, but maybe our viewers, you know, I think, I mean, you know, in Evanston, we don't generally set a lot of the police and fire benefits. I mean, that's done in Springfield, and so that, you know, to that extent, the policy actions that we could conceivably take are more limited, and it does seem a little bit unfair to me, actually, that Springfield dictates what we do, and then we have to come up with the money. I mean, it's, but that's perspective, so.
Alderman Burrus?
I'd actually like to echo what Alderman Wilson said, but also, thank you very much for coming and making a presentation that is what I've been trying to struggle with, with the actuarial folks over the last two years, and felt like I wasn't getting a whole lot of traction. So I can't tell you how much I appreciate you being here and explaining it in this fashion. And also, following up on that, the actuaries keep coming up with, they were coming up with eight, we pushed it, and they came down to seven, which I kept saying was the wrong number. Why, I mean, do you work with them, Mitch? Why are they doing this in municipalities and the state across the board? And, you know, I kept asking that question, and I felt like I've never really received an appropriate answer, with, clearly, they're giving us information that will never bail the water out of the boat that is sinking.
Yeah, I mean, the Government Accounting Standards Board has provided these rules for a while, and what's interesting is that they've now come out with a preliminary set of views for adjustments and amendments to the rules that pretty much preserves the basic structure. So the major pension fund managers and actuaries in the country of California public employees, et cetera, have said that it won't change the way they calculate things at all. You know, it's, the incentives that the Government Accounting Standards Board has to get this right just seem not to be there, and I personally don't understand exactly why, but certainly, the economics and kind of finance people at universities will, are in near-uniform agreement that these rules don't make any sense.
Alderman Rainey? Oh, and I would like to mention that you are getting some traction in Springfield. Our state representative, Robin Gabel, is here to hear you.
I just wanted to talk, just briefly, about the reality of the impact on taxpayers. And that is, that it's easy for us to make political statements that we're pushing the bill off into the future for our children, which we are doing, but the reality is, even at 7%, we charge the taxpayers on the levy this year in excess of $15 million for just police and fire pension, when the entire general fund levy, the entire general fund levy, was under $40 million. So of that, 15, little over 15, went to police and fire. If you're talking 3.5%, you're probably looking at a $30 million levy. And there comes a point in time when unless we do the long-range policy changes, you know, 15 million this year, 30 million next year, 45 million the next year, it is going to be intolerable and undoable. And so, something's going to have to give, because every year, I mean, if you look back five years, and if I were to be told, and in 2010 or 2009, you're going to levy almost $16 million in pensions, I would just say, oh. almost $16 million in pensions, I would just say, "Oh, no, no, you're crazy." But that's the reality. So while we're pushing off 30 million, we are paying in a little under 16 million, which is a huge number. And I just don't know, from a taxpayer perspective, from a middle-class perspective, how much more property taxpayers and our residents can endure.
Let me just speak to that. I think that's very well said.
Would you help me?
I agree with your analysis. And I think, you know, the—I do not think it would be a good idea for the city of Evanston to just immediately move overnight to read—you know, to sort of treat everything as though it's at 3.5% and bump—you know, throw these contributions up to 30 million. That's not what we need to do. But what we could—what could be done—if we had control over our own plans—is we could institute a new plan that was actually responsible. And then, the new costs would be on that plan. We would only—the—that plan would only be as generous as taxpayers could pay for. We'd be paying for it—you know, taxpayers would be paying for—to set aside the money, you know, really using sound financial principles. And then, we would still be left, again, with the $10,000 per household, but that we wouldn't tax overnight either. There, what we would do is, we would borrow to try to do that. So if we were in control of our own situation, what I would say is, we need to, you know, have new—if we have future work compensated on a 401(k) type plan, or if that's untenable, on a defined benefit plan where we're using these very low rates. And then, the existing liability is the $10,000 per household—the legacy liability, if you will. And that, we're just going to have to find a way to split that up among current taxpayers, future taxpayers, current employees, future employees, creditors, other creditors of the city of Evanston.
I appreciate your kind of—
Yeah, I appreciate yours as well.
I have a question. Are we too big to fail? I've got the feeling we're not quite big enough.
Mayor Tisdale, I think I agree with you. I mean, I think—the city of Chicago is too big to fail, in my view. And, you know, between—you know, one can imagine that there are towns that are small, that are too big to fail—they're not too big to fail, but the city of Evanston falls somewhere in between—I think we don't know, which maybe makes our policy decisions even more difficult. You know, perhaps in the city of Chicago, they've simply resigned themselves to—you know, to not making these kinds of fundamental changes, because after all, they would be bailed out. I don't know if that's their thinking. You know, here, I think we simply don't know. And I think, you know, we should really be considering how we can forge a fiscally responsible course for the future. And the fact of the matter is, look, even though—take the housing crisis—even though taxpayers who are responsible with housing ended up bailing out taxpayers who are not responsible with housing, you were still better off if you didn't get caught up in having an enormous mortgage and falling underwater. You're still better off taking a fiscally responsible route, and I think we should be considering doing that.
Thank you. I certainly think we are considering taking a fiscally responsible route, but I've been to Springfield to lobby on this issue and gotten nowhere. I mean, lots of promises that after the next election—but there's always a next election. This would be resolved, and it does not happen. So I'm looking at how to do this without any help from Springfield, and I'm not sure that's a doable deed.
What is the status of—there was a motion—there was a group-interest group that was looking at trying to take back the decision rights over pensions back to this municipal level. There was a bill introduced in the State House. What is the status of that?
The status of that is that the mayors aren't even discussing it, so it's pretty dead.
Well—
There's always a bill introduced. I'm too cynical these days to get excited.
Then we can just do—I mean, we can continue doing what we're doing, which is basically borrowing increasingly from, you know, the next generation. Or we can say, "We're going to do the right thing, and we're actually going to fund this thing," you know, considering these benefits as being discounted—at least, the new benefits being discounted at a rate of 4%. And, you know, that would be a large increase in the—you know, in the flow costs of the contributions, but we wouldn't be trying to make up the $10,000 per household overnight. So perhaps that is a way forward, within the constraint that Springfield sets the pensions.
I can't tell you how grateful I am to you for being here tonight. It has been absolutely tremendous.
It's been an honor. Thank you.[899.12][899.12](APPLAUSE).
Next on the agenda, would Fire Chief Kleiber please come up?
I guess we'll do this.
What? I don't know.
I'm just making a promise to go to a 401(k).
Can we have—
Liz?
Yes. They're coming up next. We got a whole plan here.
All right, just excuse me.
Thank you, though.
Chief, would you please raise your right hand and repeat after me? I, Gregory Kleiber—
I, Gregory Kleiber—
Having been appointed to the office of Fire Chief in the city of Evanston—
Having been appointed to the office of Fire Chief in the city of Evanston—
In the county of Cook—
In the county of Cook—
Do solemnly swear—
Do solemnly swear—
That I will support the Constitution of the United States—
That I will support the Constitution of the United States—
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois—
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois—
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of Fire Chief—
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of Fire Chief—
According to the best of my abilities—
According to the best of my abilities.
Congratulations.[1000.31][1000.31](APPLAUSE). Nancy, would you and Wood Greg's family please come up?
Sarah and Patrick?
Come on. One more.
Don't you want to get in this spot?
Sorry.
Wait, wait, you need a microphone.
I have a speech here, but—Mayor, if it's longer than three minutes, get the hook out.[1105.52][1105.52](LAUGHING). But after listening to that pension fund presentation, I'm announcing my retirement this evening.[1113.83][1113.83](LAUGHING). I plan on only having this happen one time in my life, so I do have some things I'd like to say. First, I want to start by thanking the city manager for the confidence he's placed in me. Wally, the process you used to select your fire chief has been really a character-building experience, so thank you. I want to thank everyone throughout the community who offered words of encouragement, support, and congratulations over the last several months. I want to thank our division chiefs, Tom Janetsky and Ron Gannon. It's been a very challenging spring and summer for the three of us, but we managed to keep our department operating at a high level and moving forward. I'd also like to thank our former chief, Alan Brokowski, for providing me the opportunity for advancement and having faith in my abilities to lead. I want to say what a privilege and honor it is to stand before you as Evanston's Fire When I started my career 25 years ago, I had no idea that my career path would lead me to this day. I've learned a lot over the last 25 years, both in and out of the fire service. The most salient lessons I've learned involve the qualities and attributes necessary for success in life. These include a strong work ethic, dedication to craft, commitment to the service of others, treating people with kindness and respect—the golden rule. There are several people here this evening that I'd like to recognize. You've just met my family, my wife, incredible wife Nancy, for her support, and our three wonderful children, for all that they've put up with over the years for me. Nancy and I married 26 years ago. We were married at age 14.[1239.02][1239.02](LAUGHING). Laws have changed since then. Those of us in the fire service know that being the spouse or a child of a firefighter is not easy. But knowing that Nancy had everything under control at home, while I was on duty serving our community, provided me with comfort and peace of mind. My mom and dad are here this evening. Could you please stand, Mom and Dad?[1268.83][1268.83](APPLAUSE). They're the ones responsible for instilling the values that have guided me my entire life, and it's nice to know that even at the age of 50, I can still make my parents During one of my interviews, I was asked who in my life had inspired me. Without hesitation, I said Sam Hicks. Sam, along with Jack Mortel, encouraged me to take the test and become a firefighter. Sam was my speed skating coach and my first fire chief. But more importantly, Sam was like a second father to me. Sam's biography is a true Evanston success story. I didn't know till well after Sam had retired as Fire Chief just what he had gone through during the early parts of his career, and I'm about to embarrass him, but I'm going to relay some of this information. Sam began his career in 1952 and served Evanston for 35 years. For many years, he was forced to eat alone with separate dishware during meals in the firehouse. Why? Simply because of the color of his skin. He suffered other forms of racial discrimination and indignities of being treated as a second-class citizen. Yet he persevered, rose through the ranks, and became Evanston's first black Fire Chief. He never spoke about it, and he was never bitter. We've come a long way in Evanston, and it's because of inspirational leaders like Sam Hicks. I love Evanston. This is a great place to live, work, and play. I'm honored and humbled to lead this great department. At the core of every decision I make will be the commitment to provide the people of this city with the best fire and EMS service possible. Finally, I'd like to thank the men and women of Local 742 for their support. I spent 23 years as their brother. We had some great times and some times that were pretty tough. I want to assure the city manager and the city council that I understand fully that my role has changed, and I think I've proven that over the last couple of months. But while I know which side of the table I sit on, I'll never forget where I came from. Thank you very much.[1453.87][1453.87](APPLAUSE).
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I don't think that we can, even on a busy agenda night, take too much time—take enough time—to congratulate Chief Kleiber, to welcome his family, Nancy, Patrick—hi, Sarah, and Mr. and Mrs. Kleiber. I see Chief Brokowski is here, too. Chief Hicks, members of our CERT team are here to celebrate with us, and, of course, members of our Fire and Life Safety Department. I want to congratulate a man whom I know is an extraordinary professional, a fine citizen, and a dedicated public servant for all his years of service to this community already. And I look forward to many more years of great service from you, Greg. And I say this as Chief Kleiber's alderman, so—I'm happy to have you in Evanston, on the job, and in the ward. So congratulations, Greg. One more round, please. Anybody who's here, please.[1530.25][1530.25](APPLAUSE).
Thank you, Alderman Grover. Next, I have a proclamation. National Preparedness Month is September 2010, whereas National Preparedness Month creates an important opportunity for every resident of Evanston to prepare their homes, businesses, and community for any type of emergency—from natural disasters to potential terrorist attacks. And whereas investing in the preparedness of ourselves, our families, businesses, and communities can reduce fatalities and economic devastation in our communities and in our nation. And whereas the Federal Emergency Management Agency's READY Campaign, Citizen Corps, and Evanston's Office of Emergency Preparedness, along with private and volunteer agencies, are working to increase public awareness concerning the importance of preparing for emergencies and to persuade individuals to take action. And whereas emergency preparedness is the responsibility of every citizen within the city of Evanston, and all citizens are urged to make preparedness a priority by taking four simple steps. One, get an emergency supply kit. Two, make a family emergency plan. Three, be informed about the types of emergencies that can occur in Evanston and Illinois. And four, get involved with local preparedness organizations and efforts. And whereas all citizens of Evanston are encouraged to participate in emergency preparedness activities and to review the READY Campaign's websites at www redo.gov or www listo.gov in Spanish, or by contacting the Evanston Office of Emergency Preparedness. Now, therefore, I, Elizabeth B. Tisdall, Mayor of the city of Evanston, do hereby proclaim September 2010 as National Preparedness Month and encourage all citizens and businesses to develop their own emergency preparedness plan. Tom, are you here?
I am.
And Tom is here with a huge number of our emergency preparedness votes. So you all—
Thank you, Mayor.
You all received this proclamation. Thank you all very much for being here.
Thank you. Thank you.[1696.95][1696.95](APPLAUSE). Thank you. Good evening, everybody. On April 13th, 2004, the city of Evanston took the initiative to start its first community emergency response team. These are members of the community. As you look at this group here, I'm sure a lot of you, as aldermen, recognize some of these faces from your own wards. And it's just amazing that these people give the time and the effort and the training back to the community that is given to them for so long. We acknowledge the 40-plus members of the CERT team, and some of them have come out tonight to support Chief Kleiber's promotion and to promote the proclamation this evening. These people go through continuous training. Their training involves fire safety, search and rescue, first aid classes, and just continuous training year-round. And some of the things that they participated in are some of the responses that we've had to severe weather, utility outages, some shelter operations. So I'd like to give them all a round of applause for the commitment.[1759.16][1759.16](APPLAUSE). In addition, I'd like to also invite people who are interested in the upcoming CERT trainings that we have. On September 23rd, we start our next CERT training, and we are accepting applications also online or in person at the Fire Department headquarters. So anyone who's interested in joining this team is more than welcome to come out. You can also visit our information on the city's website underneath the Fire Department and Emergency Preparedness. At this time, I'd like to turn the podium over to our community partner in response in health preparedness, Ivana Thomas.
Thank you, Tom. Also—
And as we gear up for seasonal flu and flu as it relates to H1N1, we know that having a core group of volunteers is critical to complement our first responders. So I'm sharing information with the dais, alerting you about the Medical Reserve Corps and what we do in concert with our CERT team, and encouraging you to share with your constituents to volunteer, to be a part of the Medical Reserve Corps. Information is on the flyer that I've presented, as well as I've left information in the back for the community, but if you want to contact the Health Department directly as it relates to the Medical Reserve Corps, you can contact us at www.cityofevanston.org/health, or contact us directly at 847-866-2969. And our Medical Reserve Corps are made up of volunteers who have a medical expertise, medical or healthcare background, and also those who do not, who work in support with us as it relates to emergency response. Thank you for this time to recruit, to work in concert with our local EMS office and our CERT volunteers.[663.62][663.62](Applause).
Thank you all. My final proclamation is World Car Free Day is September 22nd, 2010. Please, everyone, drive less that day or not at all, and do the same thing every day as much as you can. City Manager, do you have public announcements and presentations?
Yes, Madam Mayor, if I can just dovetail on the last item regarding September 22nd. The city of Evanston is also actively participating in this Car Free Day, and we're encouraging all residents to leave their cars at home and join other communities in the Chicago area to explore alternate modes of transportation. To mark the day, the city, along with the Active Transportation Alliance and many local sponsors, will be holding a car-free promotional event at the 909 Davis Building from 6:00 to 9:00 a.m., with a rally at 8:00 a.m. The rally will include appearances and speakers by local officials, free food and drinks, free bike checkups, an extra bike parking corral, and opportunities to win a free bike, bike accessories, transit passes, and other items. So again, we would encourage folks to go to our website, www.cityofevanston.org, or to call us at area code 847-448-8085.
Alderman Wilson?
And that will be an opportunity to ride downtown to the Loop with me on your bicycle if anyone's interested, so I'll be there if anyone would like to join me.
Thank you.
Next, Madam Mayor, under City Manager, Presentations. As you know, we have been working diligently to move forward with a process to contract out our refuse service. We have conducted a proposal process and have received those proposals. We plan to come back to you at your next meeting to consider these proposals, but we'd like to take a few moments this evening to give you an update on this process. Suzette Robinson, our Director of Public Works, is here and would like to make a brief presentation. Again, we're not asking the council to take action this evening on this, but we felt, given the scope and magnitude of this process, and certainly the council has spoken about this over the last several months, a number of times, prior to coming back to you at your next regular meeting, which will be on Monday, September 27th, that we wanted to have an opportunity to give you a preview of the recommendations that we are formulating and will be coming to you with. So with that, I'd like to introduce Ms. Robinson.
Good evening. Artis?
Presentation.
Thank you.
Suzette.
All right. First, I want to take three minutes to say a few words since you're... I'm just kidding. Just kidding. I didn't give my three minutes of fame at the microphone. So as Wally mentioned, we started our, the RFP process for the solid waste options. I came to you talking about solid waste. It seems like for the last three years, we've done a variety of savings initiatives with existing staff over the last couple of years, and then also looked at some contract opportunities as well. The solid waste RFP included several components. The Single Family Refuge Program, which is the normal garbage service that the city crews currently provide. The City Condo Program for Refuge, which is provided by the contractor Flood Brothers. Single Family Recycling and Condo Recycling are provided in concert by Groot. And then the Yard Waste Collection Program, which is provided by city crews as well. When we met with council and talked about putting together an RFP, we were directed to include all of these services and the recycling service as an alternate to the bid, which we did, and we also decided to add yard waste as an alternate to the bid as well, to see how the pricing would come out for that service as well. We had six companies that responded to the RFP, and they're listed there. Flood Brothers Group, Lakeshore, Republic, Veolia, and Waste Management. The evaluation process on the committee was myself, Brooke Beale, who's the Executive Director of SWAN, Jill Jackson, the purchasing and contracts manager, and Lonnie Jeske, the fleet manager. We evaluated each of the RFPs on the following criteria: costs, the firm's qualifications and approach, looking at the qualifications of their staff, how much solid waste experience they have. We also looked at their financial viability, as well as how they were approaching the variety of services, how they proposed to deliver those services to Evanston, and as seamless as possible. We also looked at customer service, how long the operating hours that they had available, whether there were people available to answer phones. We also looked at how fast they would respond to issues and resolve issues as well. Environmental responsibility included, not only whether they had an environmental component in terms of providing recycling services, we also looked at how responsible they were as a company in terms of CNG, natural gas vehicle operations, as well as their whole company approach to biodiesel, use of biodiesels, and other environmental opportunities. We also, the final criteria, was the local employment program. We apply the local employment program to this contract, which is typically, has been reserved for construction contracts, but in this case, since there was a limited opportunity for an MBE, MWEBE component to this program, we decided a local employment program would be beneficial. Just to kind of give you a status on where we are with the evaluation of the RFPs, the single-family refuges, we have evaluated all the RFPs for this service, and we have a clear choice. That has been identified, and we're in the process of checking references, and we plan to commence contract negotiations with the recommended firm shortly. The City Condo Refuge Collection and Disposal Program, we had two firms emerged as frontrunners. We conducted interviews of both firms, and one firm was selected, and we're in the process of checking references, and will begin contract negotiations with that firm as well. The Recycling Collection, once again, there was a clear choice. We are checking references on that issue, but I will address that later in the presentation in terms of our recommended options for providing that service. And Yard Waste Collection and Disposal, the same, we have a clear choice in that regard, and we're checking references, and we'll commence contract negotiations for that service as well. I want to go back and revisit. When I did the solid waste options proposal, we talked about the different options and how we would weigh those options, and we looked at customer service, response time, the ability to provide additional services. We also looked at staffing impacts, whether there was a local employment requirement. We looked at equipment requirements, the insurance fund impact for work-related injuries, et cetera, and we also looked at flexibility in operations. So this is just a review of the three options that were originally presented in the presentation back in November. I'm sorry, I think I skipped one. Option one was to maintain services with modified operations, meaning that the city would continue to provide garbage collection, Groot would continue to provide recycling, and recycling would still be provided by a contractor, and condominium collection would also be provided by a contractor. What we found is we've actually tried to do this already, and it's not working very well. As you all know, we did change our workdays to a five-day, eight-hour workday, and we have not been able to... We've been probably 80% at collecting the garbage on time, but we have not been able to keep up with yard waste and have been rolling over into the fifth day to complete collections on a regular basis. We have resulted, we have got the overtime savings from holidays because we're on a five-day operation, but just recently, this last Memorial, Labor Day weekend, we actually had to run overtime on Saturday to finish the collections for this past week. So some of the things in this operation worked and others did not. I keep skipping. Okay. Option two was the option that the staff had recommended previously, which was for the contractor and city to switch operations, meaning that the city would collect recycling and the contractor would select, collect garbage. And then option three is the total contracting of all operations. So once again, this really only included recycling and refuse, but we have expanded that to also include yard waste collections as a possibility. This is just a reminder of what our solid waste budget equals. The first subtotal solid waste budget number is really actually the budget book number. The additional services that are added to that is we pay about $25,000 per truck for vehicle maintenance. In reality, it costs about $35,000 for trucks. So right now, the other departments are paying that additional $10,000 to the fleet fund to repair our garbage trucks. The workers' compensation expense that's listed there, that's a projected number, and that's just for the injuries that have occurred this fiscal year. So it's projected to be $250,000. So that brings our solid waste budget for this year to just over $5 million. So I'm looking at the impact of selecting option two, which would be switching the services. Now, included in this contract, or I'm sorry, included in this table and these numbers are the recommended, I'm using the numbers of the vendors that we thought were frontrunners for those projects, for those particular components. And the first line there where it talks about the refuse collection, the subtotal for the solid waste budget is impacted, the city crews switch to collect recycling, and a contractor switches to collect refuse collection. We still have city crews that are collecting special pickups in this particular format. And then we also, one of the contractors agreed, or vendors, agreed to purchase six of our older refuse trucks for $213,000, so that's a subtraction, as well as if we're proposing to contract out yard waste collection, so we would eliminate two additional FTEs, and those positions are currently vacant, and then elimination of an additional garbage truck. So as a result, that reduction number, that 1.2 million, is actually from this 5.3 million. But keep in mind that this does not include the revenue that we generate from the sanitation service charge that are being charged.
Excuse me, Suzette. Alderman Grover has a question.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Director Robinson. So on the special pickups, we don't cover our costs on that with the fees that we assess for the special pickups?
No, the special pickup fee, we generate about $80,000 in revenue for special pickup. As a result of the contractor collecting the garbage and abiding by the rules more closely in terms of how much garbage you can actually have out there, we anticipate that that revenue will increase, but I still want to be a little conservative and say that it wouldn't go above $100,000. But the other side is that the contractor charges a lot more for special pickups than we do as a city, so there would be an added expense to the resident if the contractor were to pick up the special pickups. So that is the 1.2 rate reduction. And then included in this number also is the purchase of $25,000 new 95-gallon garbage carts. So we have about 1,400 residents that have downsized to 65-gallon carts, and then one new garbage cart will be provided to each resident as a part of this proposal.
Either size?
Well, we still have the 65s to provide, so, and the city will own the garbage carts, so they're just going to purchase them for us, and we will do that distribution as well. So what I did was look at the impacts of option two. The included services from the contractor, as I mentioned, is the replacement of the 95-gallon carts, purchasing the refuge trucks, the collection of municipal buildings, and we also included in the contract for them to provide the dumpster turbos for our two lakefront festivals at no charge. So they agreed to do that. The included services on the city side is the special pickup collection, plus the revenue associated with that, snow removal operations, support, personnel, and equipment. We recently, about two years ago, bought four new garbage trucks, and they're equipped with snow plows, and they have been the best addition to our snow operations, especially with the heavy snow that we've received the last few years. Appliance pickup service, tire service removal, it gives us strike protection, having our own employees, we're covered should a strike occur, to be able to at least provide some minimal collection across the board, because we would have the equipment and personnel to do that, as well as the Business and City Parks Recycling Collection Program, and that's an added service that we received a grant to provide containers, and we plan to do that collection ourselves as well. This is option three, which is contracting out all the services, and included in that is the same calculations, but it eliminates basically all the city crews, the 10 positions that are currently assigned to sanitation, and the elimination of eight additional garbage trucks. I'm still holding on to my four new garbage trucks with snow plows, so (laugh) that's the street side.[1685.26][1685.26](Laughter). So, but that reduction is 1.3 million from that $5 million figure. And then I want to look at the impacts. The included services for the contractor are the same, but what changes is all the city services that were included under option two are now excluded services. Now, the contractor could provide those services, but all of those, with the exception of snow removal, that is, all of those services would be at a cost, so that's going to impact that 1.3 million dollars. So basically, the difference between option two and three is about $100,000, which is the special pickup revenue, so it really is equal for the city crews to still continue to switch and collect recycling, which is the recommended option, staff-recommended option, that is. And then finally, one other item I wanted to talk about was an additional revenue proposal for sanitation, and that involves a transfer station fee, which some cities are paying or are charging for the operation of a transfer station within So that's going to impact that 1.3 million dollars. So basically, the, the difference between option two and three is about $100,000, which is the special pickup revenue. So it really is equal for the city crews to still continue to switch and collect recycling, which is the recommended option, staff recommended option, that is. And then finally, one other item I wanted to talk about was an additional revenue proposal for, for sanitation, and that involves a transfer station fee, which some cities are paying or are charging for the operation of a transfer station within the city limits. And the, the fee really is designed to offset the, the impact of that operation to the city infrastructure. So we're proposing to establish a transfer fee station of $2 per ton for refuse that is transferred to Veolia starting January 1, 2011. They, they transfer approximately 150,000 tons here in Evanston, and that will result in $300,000 in revenue to fund infrastructure maintenance and replacement. And finally, the next steps would be for us to continue to complete our reference checks and conduct the contract negotiations. We plan to prevent staff recommendations for the contract awards at the September 27th City Council meeting, and then we will work to prepare the ordinance changes for the solid waste operations and vehicle sales for introduction at the first council meeting in October. So, finally, questions?
Are there any questions? Alderman Tendem?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Could you elaborate a little bit more on the additional revenue proposal, the transfer station fee? I'm curious in a little more detail how that works, who is the, you know, the, has this been already arranged with Veolia, or is that?
No, this, we would have to establish the ordinance requiring the fee. They already report their waste totals, are required to report their waste totals to us and to IEPA every year, and based on how much garbage they transfer at the facility, we would be establishing that. So this is just a proposal that we want you to consider. I believe Ms. Daley is going to talk to you about that more as a part of the budget, but, the budget revenue.
Thank you very much.
Who collects the trash? Is that part of this at all?
That's collected under the commercial franchise, and that, that is ve, that's different from this. Mm-hmm.
Wait, 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 we've got a city council meeting, I'm sorry. You can ask. I'm sure Ms. Robinson will answer your question if you just ask it outside. City Clerk, do you have any communications?
No, no communications at this time, Mayor.
Thank you. Rodney. Next is mayoral appointments. Would somebody like to make a motion? Well, we thought we'd get it done before the meeting. Yeah, thank you.
Madam Mayor, members of council, the mayor requests approval of two appoint, of three appointments this evening, two to the library board, Sharon Arseneau, and Mildred S. Harris, and to the minority women and Evanston Business Enterprise Committee, David Leroy.
Second.
I move approval.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. And next on my agenda is citizen comment. Does, oh, we do have a sign-in, we have multiple sign-in sheets.
Citizen comment is over here.
It's just, we, we added some pages, I think.
Okay, phew, it's not as many pages. All right, there are thirty-four names. If, thirty-five, thirty-six names. If each person tries to take a minute, it will probably take forty, the forty-five minutes that we have allotted for citizen comment. I'm glad that you're all here, and I'm sorry that the time is so slow. I'm going to call your names, and please come up in groups of five. Frances Sideman, Penelope Whiteside Side, Lori McFarlane, Mary Rooney, and Janice Michael, 2227 Lincolnwood Drive, Janice. You're, aren't you, you're on the non-agenda. Let them go, and then I'll put you in. He has to leave. You may use anyone you want. All right, Bonnie, go quickly, please.
I'll just, I have a lot to say, and.
Frances, I'm sorry, can you wait just a one minute for Bonnie?
I'm Bonnie Wilson, Evanston Township Assessor. I really have a lot to inform the new taxpayer, the taxpayers about the upcoming, the upcoming appeal that they weren't going to be getting. Anybody that appealed their assessments during this last appeal period, I want you to call our office, so we can tell you who to call if you want your appeals, if you felt your appeals were, were less than what you wanted them to be. So I'm going to have you call our office at 847-332-2465. And also, if you didn't get an exemption that you feel you're entitled to for, and you want it on the second installment bill, that is ending tomorrow. So you need to call our office and get those exemptions in. I'm here mostly to talk about my new deputy assessor that I just hired. The new Evanston deputy assessor is my, is Nick Pavletic. He's over here, standing over here, and he's been here for quite a long time. Nick comes to this office with impressive credentials, and Nick worked for the Cook County Assessor for 13 years. During that time, he worked as a commercial analyst, as a field inspector, as a taxpayer advocate analyst, and as a senior residential analyst. Nick also has a certified Illinois Assessing Officer certification. Because of Nick's experience as a taxpayer advocate, he understands how to respond to any questions from any Evanston taxpayer. Nick Hasso came highly recommended by the supervisor and staff of the Skokie branch of the Cook County Assessor's Office. No, I am, I'm done. Right. I just, be sure everyone calls at 847-332-2465, 846 Dodge, and our office hours are from 8:30 to 4:30.
Thank you. Alderman Burris, and then let's please get to public comment.
I just actually might reduce public comment to let everyone know that the plastic bag ordinance has been removed from the agenda, in case people are going to talk about that, it'll be on the October 11th agenda. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and my apologies to the library board. If you'd like to go in the Aldermanic Library, you could, and if you're happy sitting there, you're more than welcome to sit there. I'm sorry that we are running very late. Frances, go ahead.
Okay. My name is Frances Sideman. I live at 600 South Boulevard. You know, it's a little daunting to follow the gentleman who talked about the pensions, but actually, I think I'm also talking about fiscal responsibility, so I, I feel entitled to do that. The remarkably excessive responses to the recent modest proposal by the library board is amazing to me. Assumptions are being made which seem to be totally out of proportion to the plan the board is proposing. This plan does not provide for extraordinary funding for the library, but simply for the level of financial stability to support the library system as a healthy resource for our community, and to meet the needs of what we hope is a literate and cultured community. This is not a lot to ask in a town that presumably values these, these factor features and apprises educational achievement and good results in our schools on their, their tests. As I muse on all the strange things that are being said by people who should know better, my thoughts turn to our four empty grassy plots that represent the failure of one of our city's recent great ideas. Not all the money spent.
Frances, I'm sorry, you are going to have to wrap it up.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Go right ahead.
Not all the money spent in the city of Evanston is wisely spent. There is not a high level of transparency that enables the average taxpayer to know where his money really goes. This proposal for funding the library would permit us all to see what we are paying for, and whether these funds are used for the good of community at large. My suggestion is, do not close fire stations, do not fire police officers or city employees, simply make more rational decisions about priorities, and recognize the library system for the important and central asset it is to our common well-being. Do a better job on the math and get your priorities straight.
I'm Penelope Whiteside from 2117 Payne Street. I'm a 48-year resident of Evanston. I think it's time to lift our eyes to the larger question involved in this library debate, namely, what kind of city do we wish our children and grandchildren, and old people for that matter, to inhabit? I think it is one where learning and imagination are honored. I think it is a city which continues to support two great American legacies, the public school system and public libraries. We cannot know how many have been inspired by what they found at libraries. At the branch level, libraries are especially important as accessible gathering places within walking distance from residential neighborhoods. We need more branches, not fewer. My suggestion to Mayor Tisdale and Alderman is to allow the library board to create an individual taxing unit that would be comprised of a baseline amount, but also a repository for voluntary contributions. The response to such a setup might open some eyes. I predict that the results would show overwhelming support for library maintenance and expansion. We could volunteer to give something extra to the library, in the same way we can give extra money to NICOR to help those less fortunate. Please reconsider.
I live at 2720 Eastwood Avenue, and I'm here partly because I love libraries, like a lot of people in the audience. I, I fell in love with libraries when the first bookmobile came to my neighborhood when I was seven, and I've been pretty passionate about them ever since. But I'm not really here just for sentimental reasons. I'm here because I'm a lawyer, and I'm looking at the proposed ordinance, and it's flatly illegal, which brings me to my second point, that the state act clearly gives the library board the opportunity to do what they want to do, but as a taxpayer, that's another reason why I'm here. I support libraries, what I don't support are doomed lawsuits, which apparently Evanston loves, because we engage in a lot of them. But this is going to be another one over this ordinance if we go forward with it in this form. And finally, I'm here as a citizen who votes in every election, and I will remember your votes. Thank you.
Janice Michael, 2227 Lincolnwood Drive. And I'm here because times are hard, and the libraries are cheap as city services go. The libraries are where we go for education, for a place to gather, for a place where we can be part of our communities. The Central Library is wonderful, but you've got to pay for parking. My single mother-daughter, she can't do that. When she brings her child to the library every day, it's to her local library, where she can walk, where she can meet with other people. It's a cheap resource for hard times. It won't do a bit for our pension fund to take that money away, not a bit that counts. But it matters to those of us who can't trot over to Borders and pick up the books we need. It matters to the mothers of young children, and to the people who are caretakers for young children, and it matters to our elders who gather in those community libraries that are close to home. We need those places as we face unemployment and as we face lower incomes. It's what we need to keep our community going. Thank you.
Leora Siegel, Gary Regevian, Bob Cruz, Boris Furman, and Alex Elliott. Ms. Siegel, I have a note that you get two minutes because Mr. Tannen ceded his time to you.
Thank you.
I just wanted everyone else to know why I'm being unfair.
Thank you. My name is Leora Siegel. I've been an Evanston resident for 16 years. I live at 21, 28 Forestview Road. My two children attend Evanston Township High School, and I've also been a professional librarian for 19 years, and I serve on the board of the North Suburban Library System this year as secretary. I'm also additionally the library director at the Chicago Botanic Gardens Lenhart Library, which, like the Evanston Public Library, is a member of the North Suburban Library System. And as a taxpayer, I fully and totally support the fund model presented by the Evanston Public Library Board. The Public Library Fund is very commonly used in Illinois and in our neighboring suburbs. The North Suburban Library System Board and President sent a letter to the mayor and to the city council on August 23rd, and I'd like to read it to you, it's short, for those who, of you have not seen it. This is from Catherine Codell, President, and unanimous vote of the North Suburban Library Board. Dear Mayor Tisdale and City Council Members, the Board of Directors of the North Suburban Library System, NSLS, supports the establishment of a Public Library Fund, PLF, for the Evanston Public Library. NSLS is one of nine multi-type library systems in Illinois funded by yearly grants from the Illinois General Assembly and the Secretary, Secretary of State's office. We have over 650 member libraries, and the Evanston Library is one of 49 public libraries. The PLF method is, of funding is quite common among libraries of Evanston's size, and will help guarantee that your taxpayers have access to current and relevant library materials and services that will help them in their daily lives. The Evanston Public Library is one of the poorest-funded systems in our system, funded libraries in our system. As a result, the library's collection has grown out of date each year, leaving students, new parents, job seekers, children, and avid readers unable to find the library materials they are looking for. As a result, many Evanston citizens travel to nearby communities to seek the information and materials they need. Clearly, it is not in Evanston's best interest to have Evanston residents and their purchasing power at local businesses, traveling to libraries in other communities which have newer collections of materials.
I need you to wrap it up, you're well over.
We know that you strive to give the best interest of Evanston residents and citizens in mind in your decision, and please know that this model would ensure stable and predictable funding for the Evanston Public Library, and for that reason, we urge you to support this method of funding. Thank you.
I am Gary Regevian. I'm a 27-year resident of Evanston at 2334 Hastings, and I'm not a librarian. But I firmly back the library board's decision to invoke the Local Library Act, and I vehemently object to an ordinance indexing the library funds to the City General Fund. I think that the Evanston Public Library's role as a primary community resource is critical to our most, most pressing community priorities, and I think that ramps the, the role and mission of the library up a notch from just even the discussion of, you know, having a library in the neighborhood. I wonder if the Alderman and the city manager have seen the, this month's issue of their public, their professional journal, Public Management, Public Libraries Daring to Be Different. This is the cover article, which says, "One in two Americans, 169 million Americans, visited a library last year to find work, secure government benefits, and, and look for information on critical medical treatments," and a lot of other really important things, all right? "And yet, across the country, library operating budgets are being cut because they're rarely associated with public safety or health. New research is finding that libraries are making significant contributions beyond their traditional roles." This article shows exactly the situation that Evanston is in. I call on our administration to be insightful enough to make that connection. We live in an intelligent community, and we need to embrace that intelligence rather than marginalizing it to the least common denominator. It's nothing short of so excited not to provide the resources for the library to meet those kinds of critical needs, and, and to help solve those kinds of community, community problems, but then to say, well, what do they do anyway? I want you to see that I am the face also of a taxpayer, a, a school parent, a resident, a business owner scraping by to pay a tax bill, but I would never question the kind of money that needs to go into the Evanston Public Libraries. A well-focused library.
Could you wrap it up, please?
I am in my last sentence. Thank you, Mayor. A well-focused library is not just another line item to be contained like the price of road salt. It is, like an education itself, a path to a better future for one and for all. It is, like an education itself, a path to a better future for one and for all.
I live at 1403 Maple Avenue. I apologize for the t-shirt. I ran right over here when I saw the agenda. The state legislators who wrote and passed the Illinois Local Library Act knew very well that this day would come, the day that a city council would decide to underfund the local library to the point where, in the opinion of its governing board, it couldn't do its job. So they gave the local library board the power to control its own funding. That's what our library board is doing. I applaud the board for its decision. I also applaud the city council for its commitment to fiscal responsibility. I know that both the city council and the library board have the best interests of our citizens at heart. Tonight, I ask the city council to let the library board secure the funding needed to provide library services to our citizens. Let them decide how much they need to do their job within the limits of the law. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name's Bob Cruz. I live at 2615 Poplar. Madam Mayor, distinguished members of the council. The library board has been appointed by the mayor and approved by the council and charged with the process of distributing library services. Deliberation by the council, I feel, does not serve you or the public well if it's seen as an attempt to divert attention from the process of delivering library services to one of chasing the money. Sorry, that didn't come out right. I suggest that this is not an issue of money, but that it's rather of doing what needs to be done. The council, I feel, should welcome the library board proposal that such a qualified and dedicated publicly-supported group of individuals willing to take on this task and relieving the council of the burden of not having to deal with the minutia of providing annual library services. I think your work and attention is needed elsewhere, that it's already been made abundantly clear by the work that's already been done, that on such a path, you will be supported and the money will follow.
Alex Elliott, 732 Michigan Avenue. Boris mentioned that the day has finally come for us, but I remember the first time that I stood here speaking for the libraries, I was 13 years old, and I'm now 23. So I just wanted to dispel the myth that the branch libraries serve the elite. That's untrue. They serve 50 people a day who don't have Internet at their homes with their computers. They serve the adults with chronic mental illnesses at Albany Care, the students with physical and/or learning challenges from Park School, the youths, the seniors, those who can't afford to get to the main library. There is no other community building in Evanston that can be supplemented to provide this kind of outreach. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Jeff Smith, Mary Griffin, Michael Tannen, who I thought already ceded his time, and Lori Keenan, who is ceding time, I believe, to Ellen Newcomer, if that's correct? Otherwise, Lori, let me know what you're doing.
Thank you. Jeff Smith, 2724 Harrison. And I hope that Professor Rowe's presentation will shock us all into some perspective. I didn't bring a prop here, like some speakers do, but if I did, it would be a 55-gallon drum representing the city total budget, and in comparison to that, library spending would be less than a milk jug, and the branch libraries would be about a measuring cup. With the hole into which we've dug ourselves, whether it's 200 million, or 250 million, or 400 million, is not the library's fault. And you can't fill it with the library budget, even if you canceled all of it. And we need to do some serious digging. And you can't dig very well if you're holding a political football. The library's overdue assertion of independence merely puts Evanston back into sync with other Illinois policy. State law specifically says that the library levy is an addition to the city so that a city doesn't need to cut services if a library increases its own. And I think we need to consider who this board is and who we're talking about. This isn't a group of maniacs, lunatics, rebels, or radicals, like me. They're our neighbors. They're our friends. They're our fellow citizens, people who were appointed by the mayor that this building is named after, and now by this mayor. And I think they deserve the presumption of good faith that they will honor their fiduciary duty as trustees and as servants of the community. So I would ask this council to let the library function as the law intended. The whole point of the semi-autonomy of library...
Jeff, I'm sorry. I need you to wind down.
The whole point is to prevent and resist the political pressures from pushing libraries into an annual cage match with fire stations or health clinics. Virtually every other city in Illinois respects this principle, and we should too. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Mary Griffin. I'm a resident of Evanston. I live at 2503 Prairie. And I have been a multi-decade member of Evanston Public Library. There's a matter for consideration by the council of an ordinance proposing a library budget to modify the way in which the library is funded. The impetus for this proposed ordinance arose from funding issues relating to the Evanston Public Library. As you know, several months ago, the council told the library to raise $160,000 in six months, do outreach, and come up with a plan for sustainable funding. And the library has addressed these, raising over $171,000 in four months, having the most successful summer reading program ever, and providing a plan of sustainable funding to the city. In response, the city is proposing this ordinance, which, as stated earlier, I believe is also unconstitutional. The board, or, I'm sorry, the Illinois Legislature has already established a process for funding the library. The legislation was passed and adopted in the proper course as required by Illinois law. Through a referendum, Evanston voters increased the possible levy amount as allowed by the Local Library Act. This proposed ordinance deviates from the act, and the city council does not have the authority to pass this law, or to change this law. The citizens of Evanston are entitled to rely on the city council implementing the laws of the state. The citizens of Evanston are entitled to rely on the legislation passed by the People's Representatives in Springfield. The city council has a duty to its citizens to implement the laws of the state correctly. The citizens of Evanston should not have to act as a watchdog and should not have to challenge this council to properly implement the applicable laws. The citizens of Evanston are entitled to rely on its city council to act properly...
But do you please wind down now?
...and should not have to turn to other branches of government to ensure that the laws of the state, including the Local Library Act, are properly implemented. I strongly encourage all of the members of the city council not to approve this ordinance. The Illinois Legislature has already provided the process and the parameters for funding libraries, and the city council should act in compliance with this law. Thank you.
My name is Ellen Newcomer. I live at 2445 Ridgeway in Evanston, of course. As a former member of the Evanston Public Library Board, an attorney, and a past and present trustee of nonprofit organizations, I take exception to the incorrect suggestion that the Evanston Public Library Board managing a library fund might not be accountable. The library board is a board of trustees who have both statutory and fiduciary duties to the library, its patrons and staff, and to the citizens of Evanston. Indeed, the members of library boards in the hundreds of other towns and cities who all operate in accordance with the Illinois Local Library Act would doubtless be somewhat offended by any such characterization. Even in 1994, when the new library building opened, the library board knew that there were too many empty shelves, that the collection was old and deficient, and that the branches were neglected. We took our responsibility for improving the library very seriously, and we advocated very hard for more resources. Yet, from then to now, the library has been singled out for undue criticism for doing their job as library trustees and standing up for the library. The library does get thanks and support from you, the Evanston citizens, who have contributed generously through the years to attempt to make up the continued shortfalls. And I, for one, have been impressed by this most recent outpouring of private donations to save the branches. The other thing I just have to say is we all owe a big thank you to the staff of the Evanston Public Library, which has, despite understaffing and lack of proper funding, performed with admirable professionalism. To say that this last-minute proposed local ordinance, which would be based on this fiscal year's library budget, is a peace offering, is quite a stretch. This fiscal year's library budget is, after all, the one in which the Evanston Public Library suffered a drastic reduction of the already diminished collection budget. The same budget has caused deferred maintenance to become a library byword. The same budget cut off all funding to the branches at mid-year. A budget freeze at this point is not a peace offering, but a demand for surrender. It is time to stop the bad habits started by the city council many years ago of diminishing these resources. It's time to stop blaming the victim.
Ellen, you need to wind down.
I shall. No self-respecting library professional would call Evanston's library a Cadillac when it is sadly underfunded. The library board has been discussing the need to conform with Illinois law since at least 1997. At that time, a representative of the city told me, then a library board trustee, that if the library board sought to assert its rights under state law, the city council would sue us and mire the library in lengthy, expensive litigation...
Ellen, you really are out of time.
What a lovely peace offering that was. Thank you.
Next, Mike Fasilko, Russ Abel, Jim Bauerboer, 244 University, and Adam Zayed.
My name's Mike Fasilko, 2728 Reese Avenue in Evanston. I attended the Library Board of Trustees meeting on the evening that the board voted to elect themselves a public body with the authority to set a tax levy. Roughly a year ago, almost to the day, Evanston citizens participating in the budget workshops offered nearly 50 recommendations to reduce the city budget and avoid tax increases. To the council's credit, the city acted to implement those budget reductions, which included significant staff reductions and the closing of the branch libraries. The recent action taken by the Library Board of Trustees will result in higher property taxes, whether they occur this year, next year, or the following year. Members of the Board of Trustees have alluded to some of these increases already, just not to the full limit this year. So let's be clear. For every dollar increase in the library budget, the same amount will need to be eliminated from some other city service, or it will result in a property tax increase. The Library Board of Trustees needs to be honest about this. The Board of Trustees should not circumvent what the citizens had asked for, nor should they circumvent the authority of the elected officials of Evanston. Thank you.
I guess I'm here to change the topic, to the taxi ordinance. And there was confusion in an earlier meeting as to, does the taxi ordinance that we're looking at allow for the pickup of passengers in Evanston by pre-arranged appointment? And my name is Russ Abel. I'm general manager of the Hotel Orienton, and I live at 800 Elgin. And we are in favor of keeping the ability for those non-licensed taxis to pick up by appointment, by preorder, people in Evanston headed outside of Evanston. Every other portion of the ordinance we're in favor of. We fully support the local licensed taxicabs. We do not want non-licensed taxicabs soliciting or cruising for business in Evanston. We do not want them in the taxi line at the Hotel Orienton, and we will not call them on the fly for pickups or for our people on the fly to them. As you know, our owners invested a large portion of money in the spring in order to convert our hotel to a Hilton franchise. Our goal was to make ourselves more competitive and attract more visitors to Evanston.
Russ, you need to wrap it up. Sorry.
We feel that the ordinance allowing for pre-ordered transportation allows Evanston and allows the hotel and all of Evanston to be competitive with other destinations, and taking that away would be to the detriment of adding new visitors to the city. Thank you.
My name is Jim Bure. I'm with American Taxi. I was reviewing Evanston's website. On their website, it shows that they report to the citizens of Evanston. We do the same thing. We report to our customers. And today, you have to make a decision whether or not you want to support the citizens of Evanston or the company that are pursuing a non-licensed, pre-arranged pickup in Evanston. That is a major decision you have to make. We have received over 110 written responses from our customers stating they want us to continue this type of pre-arranged rides. We not only do pre-arranged rides for them, we do a free ride for the veterans for Honor flights out of Evanston. We do the senior centers, special programs for the senior centers in Evanston, which we have to use out-of-town licensed cabs to provide them the transportation. Now, you are fighting a situation here. I know all the companies, I have some friends from the other cab companies, and I hope we're still friends after this. I think we will. But we got to look at this, what is best for the citizens of Evanston. Thank you very much.
I guess I'll begin while the petitions are circulating around. My name is Adam Zayed, and I'm here as a representative of American Taxi. And I'd also like to speak about the taxicab ordinance that's potentially coming before the board today. This taxicab ordinance has the ability to have a profound effect on the citizens of Evanston, and it may significantly limit the ability of people in Evanston to make taxicab arrangements. I ask that we allow the people of Evanston to make these pre-arranged taxicab orders. It's a custom throughout Illinois and Illinois municipalities to require medallions for solicitation of taxi business. So when a taxi is cruising down the street and they have a taxicab light on, they need to have a medallion for that. But the custom is also that pre-arranged orders don't require the use of a medallion. This is the way that it is in cities, and I'll use Chicago as an example. They specifically allow for pre-arranged taxicab companies to come in and provide service. They specifically allow for it within their municipal ordinance. I ask that you do not limit the ability of Evanston citizens to make pre-arranged taxicab orders, and this is because of the effect that it will have on the people of Evanston. It will represent a real restraint on the people of Evanston. It will represent a real limitation on their ability to choose their taxicab company. It will represent a real...
I need you to wrap it up.
It will represent a significant possibility of increased taxicab fares, and it will also limit the ability of people in Evanston to look up a taxicab company online, or look up a taxicab company in a phone book, or to follow an advertisement.
You're way over your limit. Please.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
It's been a pleasure.
Thank you. Next, Dan Coyne, Betty Esther, Virginia Zabrowski, and Lynn, I'm sorry, I can't read your last name, 2016 Brown Avenue. Green. That's why I recognize the handwriting. Where is she?
Hi, I'm Dan Coyne. I'm the general manager of American Taxi. We've been providing service for the last 34 years. For 20 of those years, we had no medallions because we were late in the game. So we couldn't tell these medallion holders to come our way. We had to slowly attract them. But we built a base of over 5,000 loyal customers that we service about 50 a day on a general basis, and we want to continue to do pre-arranged rides that leave the city. For 20 years, we turned away the local rides as the ordinance prescribed. We followed the rules. We built a business. Customers choose American Taxi from Evanston when we're short on medallions, in spite of it, because they like our service. They've tried the other... tried the other services, and they choose us. They started picking us in 1976 when I started driving a cab. They called us. They called us. I was born in Evanston, by the way. But what I want to do is I want to... We do endorse the solicitation rule. We do feel that it's wrong for medallion holders to be cut out of rides for poachers and for trawlers, fishermen, or whatever. We support it. We embrace the revenue it might bring. It's going to be escalated. But we do want to continue to do our pre-arranged rides. We want to leave the choice to the customer. We want it to be competitive rather than monopolistic. It stands to be monopolistic. We don't... There's a finite amount of medallions. We're not asking to increase the medallions. That would just cause havoc in the streets. We're asking, when the need arises. There's 120,000 people that sometimes are in this city. And when flex time and the students are here and visitors are here, then there's not enough. And the hotels have to call, what, five different cab companies? They want to use one service. They want the convenience of one service. They like it a certain way.
Could you please wrap it up?
Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you.
My name is Betty Esther. I stay at 2031 Church Street. I did have two things that I wanted to speak on, but I will remark to the gentleman and the taxi thing. American taxicab is considered, and people look at it, as being a limo service, not a taxicab. So that's why they are on the internet. When people come in, they look at them as a limo service. They set them up as being a limo service. Pick me up, go there. Our taxicab cannot go to the airport and pick up like that. We don't have that luxury. So that's all I have to say to that. The other thing I wanted to speak on was P3, the NSP2 process. Earlier, it was brought before the P and D. And someone had asked them, what was the price? It was said that realtors could bring a buyer to the process, and they could be involved in it. All of that is true, except it's hard to tell someone, I'mma take you to buy something, and I don't know what it's cost. Well, cost. One thing that the home HUD requires, and says cities should establish, even with home monies, especially with NSP2, what is the selling price? When we did our home, we was given a selling price by the city.
Betty, I'm sorry. You have to wrap it up.
Thank you. A selling price. So that should be put forth on the agenda, on the website, as soon as possible, so people will know what it was. The other thing is the H2, which is the truancy ordinance.
Betty, quickly, please. You're way over time.
Thank you. The truancy order, and one thing that the people... This need to go back to the committee, because what these people are doing is to duplicate what the school system is already doing. Look at District 65 policy and District 202.
Thank you, Betty.
So why we are creating an ordinance that will only do is cite people and charge them a fine.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Alderman Rainey, did you want to ask a question?
No, ma'am. I just want to clarify that the NSP2 properties, the 100 properties, only a small fraction of them have been contracted for. None of them have been renovated, and none of them are now for sale or for rent. At the time when they are for sale or for rent, there will be massive advertising campaign letting everybody know what everything costs. It just goes without saying. So I just want to disabuse anybody of the notion that the prices are going to be secret. I mean, they're going to be highly publicized.
Thank you. Virginia?
I'm Virginia Zabrowski at 2123 Pioneer Road in Evanston. Sustainable funding is needed for Evanston's public library system, the North and South branches included. Many articles in local papers have told us, shown us how underfunded the Evanston public libraries have become. I know that Displanes pays more than twice what Evanston does for their public libraries, Skokie four times what we give our libraries. Our North and South Branch libraries are assets to our community, the whole community. They are not to be devalued. We need them to lead us in the business of living, of living in a 21st century where economic, academic, technical changes are going to be enormous. These libraries ease these new changes into our lives. They need to be well-funded. Fund our library system, a total citywide system that's flexible and growing.
Thank you. Lynn, there you are.
Hi, I'm Lynn Green, the wife of the man sitting next to you. Just real briefly, I'm not here to talk about the libraries. I'm actually here to talk about chickens. When I was... I was born and raised right here, chased pheasants over by the canal when I was a kid. Tells you how old I am. I remember the foxes and the things that used to run around here. Also, when I was a child with my cousins, my parents very dutifully sent us to the country, to a farm, every summer for four weeks. And my cousins and I came to the conclusion that the reason they did this was to cure us of any idea whatsoever of ever living on a farm. And they were very successful. Now, there's a small group of people here in Evanston that would like to bring the farm back next door to me. I would appreciate it very, very much if the city council would really reconsider voting this through. I understand pets, dogs, cats, hamsters, gerbils, cockatiels. I understand that. I have a lot of songbirds in my yard that I feed. I put water out for them. I take care of them. But they fly about. They don't leave all of their debris in my yard. They leave it in everybody's yard, which makes it more equitably distributed. As an environmental science teacher, I believe in the equitable distribution of animal waste. All right? I really do. I am totally against someone moving in next door and putting up 10 nasty chicken coops with chickens that may or may not be clean. And they get worse and worse as the pecking order is established. And if you study life science, you've seen these things. After two or three years, their necks are all nastium. It's terrible. And they smell. I'm not worried about coyotes. I'm worried about skunks. Skunks love eggs. And they will come and hunt these eggs. And also, the food that the chickens don't eat, the mice will come and eat. And since I live near the canal, I'm going to get all the mice, okay, from the canal area when the food runs out, when these people bring their chickens in. I'm sorry. Last but not least, please, please reconsider bringing these animals in next door to my house. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. Madeleine DeCree. I would like to speak about the ordinance 51-0-10. I am aware that the truancy is a serious concern that affects most school districts in the United States, and the school staff, and teachers, et cetera, and have long recognized that the truancy is a major concern. But I believe, as many other people in Evanston believe, that the schools must deal with this serious problem, not the police department. I believe that the average daily attendance rate does not capture the full picture of students who are chronically absent, because many times, the school system looked at the numbers, instead of individual patterns of absences. I talked to Mr. Paul Bronson, Bremson, I think it is, at District 65. He's the chief information person there. And I asked him for the policy on attendance and truancy. He did. And I read it, and it seemed to duplicate what the C A B is asking to change, to do. I truly believe that... I also talked to Jerome Summers, who did not vote for this. I've also talked to some teachers in District 65 and 202, who are not even aware, not even aware of this going, this issue going before the city council or human services.
Madeline, I need you to wrap up.
Thank you. I believe that the city council should send this issue back to the human services, just like the chicken issue, and work with it, and fix it, and clear it up. Thank you.
Thank you. Cheryl Shamba-Zane, 2145 Forest, Henry Latimer, Nancy Traver, and Jean Lindwall. You don't have to go in the right order. Go ahead.
I'm Henry Latimer, 2322 Isabella Street, and been there 13 years. Thank you, Madam Mayor and council members. I really hope the council members will drop this library ordinance, that's what I'm speaking on, and further attempts to strangle, bludgeon, and eviscerate your library system. Instead, I hope you'll visit your library and do some investment reading, so that you can treat histrionic diatribes by young men, saying that a 2.6% 10-year treasury bond is a risk-free investment, as it is not. You can treat him with the skepticism it deserves. As well, you might find information enabling you to question someone who says, "I can show you the details," but does not. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Nancy Traver. I live at 2617 Thayer Street, and that's in the 6th Ward. And I'm here to support Evanston's library system and the library board's vote to set up a separate budget. I think there's been a lot of misrepresentation about the library's board's vote on August 4th, and that disappoints me. I'm sorry about that. I've heard opponents saying that the library board can raise taxes as much as it wants, and this is not true. The board has promised to keep any increase very modest. One figure I've heard would raise an annual property tax, for an annual property tax of $10,000. The increase might be as much as $18, and that's the same as a few trips to Starbucks for coffee. And I want to ask you if that's really too much to ask to support our libraries, which are so important to us. Also, I wanted to talk about my visit to the main library last week. I'm a college instructor, so I was there doing some research for a project, and I found patrons lined up six-deep around the help desk. The librarians were scrambling to place incoming calls on hold for five minutes, as well as help patrons. There was a two-hour wait for computers, and many of the people using the computers were there job hunting. Many do not have home computers. They go to the library. We cannot take steps to weaken our vital library services. Our citizens need more libraries, not less. We need better library services. And I urge you to support our libraries and a separate budget for them. Thank you.
I'm Cheryl Chamberlain. I live at 2145 Forest View. I think all of you have heard amazing things in support of the library. So obviously, I'm not going to reiterate all of those. So let me just say this. I live in a household where my husband's been laid off for almost 18 months. We have no disposable income. And the proposed tax increase is something I would take a side job to support. It is important for everybody in this community. Our schools rely on the public libraries to supplement the poor libraries that they have in their facility. The teachers walk these kids to the library as a class. The elderly routinely go to, you know, walk to the public library for many different things. And we learned that during the auction, to support, to raise money to support this cause. And I think it would be very detrimental to close the branch libraries, especially coming from somebody who has no money, and would be willing to fork out that extra 20 bucks, or 30 bucks, or 50, or $100, whatever it's going to take, to keep this community at the level that it should be. We are an educated group of people. We need to retain that, and we need to expand upon that. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Jean Lindwall, 625 Library Place. I don't use either of the branch libraries and rarely use the main library. However, I understand the contribution that excellent library services make to Evanston's quality of life and our ability to keep current residents and attract new residents to our community. I support the library board's decision to move the library to the library fund model. I think that it is time to take short-term political calculations out of the process of ensuring long-term, sustainable library services that are easily accessed by residents of all neighborhoods. Since this is a new idea for many, I would suggest that the upcoming 10-month transitional budget year be used to work out the details, and that the separate library fund property tax levy be instituted the following year, when the city's budget year changes to a January 1 start. I am very concerned with the rhetoric coming from city officials so far over the library board's action. This is clearly about power. Will the city manager and city council retain their abilities to shift budget dollars from one program to another? Previous city managers and city councils haven't always made very good long-term decisions, evidenced by the pension fund messes, just one example. I am troubled by the timing of ordinance 66010, which was put on the council agenda even before tonight's joint meeting with the library board had taken place. As far as I can tell, there's no evidence to suggest that the library board will act in an irresponsible manner. The discussion should be based on facts, not on speculation designed to inspire fear among Evanston taxpayers. As you know, the library's budget represents a small portion of the city's general fund budget, and an even smaller portion of the city's total property tax levy. I think that it is...
You need to wrap it up.
One more sentence. I think that it is disingenuous to suggest that people will be forced out of their homes if funding for the library appears as a separate line on our tax bills. Thank you.
Ann Foster, Bennett Johnson, and Carolyn Murray.
I thought someone was ahead of me, but I do want to say...
Right ahead, Bennett. And it's Ann Foster. Is she here?
As a former schoolteacher and a bibliophile and a book publisher, I support fully what the library's board is doing, and hope that you will think of the West Side Branch. I'm here on a point of special advocacy for the Evanston Black Business Alliance concerning the neighborhood stabilization program. I'll be as succinct as I can. $14 million, $850,000 has been awarded to Brent Shore and the banks of our community that have provided mortgages on foreclosed homes. Brent Shore, of course, will get that asset in its portfolio. The problem with this concept is that it's bad business. As a schoolteacher, I would give it a D. It's bad for the city. As a taxpayer, I give it a D. And in racial fairness, as a black person, I give it an F. The... I recommend, one, that Brent Shore share in the acquisition process with the Chodos, local developers, and so forth. Two, that they share in the general contracting. Right now, they are the only general contractor. Three, I recommend that they share in the real estate brokerage and management. There's 50 houses, units, that will be managed for 15 years by one of their subsidiaries. So right now, as it stands, they get $14 million. The city gets well over $1 million. That means $3 million left for businesses, all businesses, black and otherwise. That means $3 million left for businesses, all businesses, black and otherwise in the city of Evanston. It's unfair. It is bad business. And what we've tried to do is negotiate. We've talked to the mayor, the city manager, public officials. Nobody's listened to us. We have talked to HUD, and HUD says that what we're asking for is totally within the guidelines of HUD. The myths are that HUD will take back the grant. They say that we're not taking back the grant; it's just a major infraction. And I think that the, there's been some medations, representation of the facts in this matter, or incompetence.
Bennett, I-
My last line.
Thank you.
We will, we negotiated. We will either demonstrate or litigate, unless some change is made in this process. Thank you.[645.88][645.88](APPLAUSE).
I'm Ann Foster. I live at 2003 Lincoln Street. I actually signed up so I could cede my time to Ellen, and she made her, made her speech. But I do want to support the libraries. I respect the city council for its desire to be fiscally responsible, but I think you should also consider that there is a great community out there, a very diverse community out there, that wants to come up with a solution that makes everyone happy, whether it's a West branch, whether it's keeping the North and South branches. It includes having our collections be up to par. It's a little embarrassing coming from a major university town and having the worst, the worst public library in the area. I support the library board. I don't think we should pick on them. I think we should admire them for what they're doing, and they were given a job to do when they were made the library board, and they're doing it, and I applaud them. And I hope that you will be supportive of them, open up to your constituents, and listen to what they have to say about the library, instead of making a decision in advance. Because I'm a little puzzled as to why things are happening so quickly without much discussion. This is all respectful, but, but we are a community, and we should all work together on this, diverse as we are. Thank you.[747.32][747.32](APPLAUSE).
Hi, my name is Carolyn Murray. I'm at 1930 Gray. I know that I signed up after Bennett, so I don't know if they're, yes?
Yeah, you did.
Okay.
I called you, I helped.
The agenda is so heavy, and I could go with a lot of passion, as all the speakers that went before me. However, I just, I guess, my, my one concern is the two minutes. Maybe we should reconsider having more time when you have citizens with more passion about their respective issues. I think ultimately, a lot of things that, most of our concerns, as far as programs and services, come down to money, and it seems as though we don't really have a lot in our budget to negotiate on certain items, so services will probably be taken away. And I think that when it comes down to a library, as opposed to a dental clinic, when it comes to a referendum that would allow police to give tickets to district officers that were, in the past, when I was growing up, did that, that was truant officers, and we had them, and that was part of their jobs. So, a lot of things come into play, but ultimately, I think that we just don't have the money. And we can go back and forth all night on these various topics, but until the money is coming in, and how you, how you get that money, we should be very considerate to citizens and to their concerns. I've been in countries where we didn't have libraries at all, and I've supported some of the people that have reached out and said, you know, "We do have internet." And I'm a user of the, the main branch very often. I'm going into my pocket, paying into the parking that goes into the revenue for the city. So, again, everyone here is very passionate and very respectful. However, I think that with this budget, and God help you, council, it's going to be a lot of cuts. So, citizens, you might want to prepare, and you might want to reevaluate your lifestyle.
Thank you. The last speaker is Manuel Silver. Yes.
Manuel Silver. Would you like the microphone? Okay.
Thank you very much.[903.82][903.82](APPLAUSE). That concludes citizen comment. The next item is a special order of business we are meeting with the library board. And I apologize. What? I don't know. Are there more taxi?
Yeah, there's a bunch of taxi folks who participate in the NPW.
But who want to-
Maybe they misunderstood the sign. Could you ask?
Are there, are there speakers who were not included who want to speak on the taxi issue, or any other? Oh, okay. I'm sorry, Lionel, there certainly are.
And, Madam Mayor, I have a letter from someone who was here and had to leave, one of the restaurant owners, who left it for citizen comment as well.
Okay, I'll get to you after the taxis. Thank you, Alderman Fisk. Would you come up and give your name, and please limit your comments to a minute, because you're not in my original calculation?
Thank you for giving the minute. Appreciate it. It's Mike Decker. I'm with North Shore Cab. I just want to take a rebuttal on a few of the other statements from other cab, American Cab. As far as the choices for the customer, we're not talking about with the new ordinance to take away the choice. They're still allowed to take American Cab, S Cab, 303, North Shore, Purple Cab. This is all five cab companies in Evanston. As far as the 120 signed names for American Cab, if you really think about it, 120 names for two weeks of working at it isn't much. Basically, I just want to say that the ordinance protects Evanston, it protects the people in Evanston. You have to remember that all those cars, they're kind of coming to Evanston with no rules and regulations around them, are more problems for the police, taxation, the roads, their pollution, things like that, the city services.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Could you give your name and address, please?
I'm Mr. Augustine Vazquez. So, I was living in Evanston for 20 years, but I'm just moved from Evanston for four years, but I'm still have my business in Evanston. I'm just don't sleep in Evanston, but I'm in Evanston. So, I'm going, I'm going to ask you a funny question, so excuse me. So, if you are in your house, you have your food in your house, are you going to let someone come to kick you out in your house? Yes or no? I don't think so. In Evanston, we have 140 taxi, and we are the professional driver. May I drive for 22 years in Evanston? I know everywhere in Evanston. The problem is happening in Evanston is very simple. When we are sitting, sitting on the post in Evanston, or kept outside come to work, me personally, I went to the American taxi, and I used to drive the American taxi. I spoke to the management. I said, "It cannot go like that. I have my bill to pay. You let me sit for six, five hours on the post. You don't give me nothing." He just ignored me. Why you don't go get a job?
I need you to wrap up here. We're running out of time.
Okay. So, if we have 140 cab in Evanston, we have enough cab to provide the service in Evanston. When all those guy come to work in Evanston, all 140 taxi sitting there in Evanston. So, that's why I have to say, so you got to help us about, about that situation.
Thank you.
My name is Nicolas Figaro. I've been in that business for 25 years. American taxi, not sure, or 303 are all guilty of the same thing. I think not sure and 303 did not choose to show up here to prove their point. American taxi, either by audacity, they choose to come and lie in your face and talking about the quality control they are so good. Is this not the issue? How come out of 75,000 people living in Evanston, they have only 100 some of petition? As a cab driver, we could go out there and get some petition too. We choose not to involve the customer into that. We choose to take our business with the city, to show our problem, the basic problem, which is, we sit in the post, and they send outside cab, taking the business out of us. If we let them do what they asking for, it's going to be the same thing for us. We're going to end up having our empty, they're going to keep putting money in their pocket. They will come in Evanston, do the same thing to us, and the driver will be sitting all day long in the post. Same thing, nothing will change. The basic thing, we need some relief from the city. We, we got 140 cabs. We don't need them anymore, if we let them do what they asking us to do. It's like, we don't need those 140 cab. Why? We come out every day and go back home empty. That's why we asking you to give us help.
Thank you.
My name is Marie. I'm a member of the Taxi Board Advisory Board. The problem really stand that we have 140 cab that inspected. These people are trained by the city. When the company, when this, when you join a company, and the company don't use the Evanston cab, they are using outside cab for their own business, because the outside cab belong to them. When they say they want to pre, I don't know what they mean by pre-arrange. Anybody who call a company, it's called pre-arrange. Now, the question is, when you call a company, which cab they send to you? The company can have Evanston cab, he can have outside cab, and what they do, they send outside cab instead of sending Evanston cab, because Evanston cab, they are, they own their own business. Their cab are their own cab, and the company are, the outside cab belong to the company. That's what I'm saying. If we let, if we say, if we, if we let this happen, it's going to be worse than the way it is now. Now, people sit down on the post, and American taxi are sending their own cab to pick up the fare, and this is, this is the problem.
I'm sorry, your time's up.
Thank you very much. Help us, please.
Thank you.[1311.51][1311.51](APPLAUSE).
Hi, my name is Alan Miller, and I'm a resident of Evanston, and I'm also the chairman of the Taxi Advisory Board. You've heard a lot of emotion, you've heard a lot of discussion, you've heard a lot of fact, and you've heard a lot of fantasy. I think the issue to most of us boils down to is that there's an ordinance that we live by, because the taxi industry is very highly regulated. I think you have to realize that these regulations are here for a reason, to protect the citizens of Evanston. They're enforced by the police department. This is all basic knowledge. But I think you have to put it in the perspective that all the suburbs that surround us have similar ordinances. They all have the same provisions about licensing taxis, and having those taxis be the priority taxis in their communities, because they trust these people. They have met, they have met the ordinance. Unfortunately, when you start bringing cabs in from other communities, they are not consistent standards. The city of Chicago was mentioned, you're comparing apples and oranges. They have 27 affiliations in Chicago, and 30 full-time police officers to enforce the ordinance.
I do need you to wrap up.
Okay. I've presented, and the advisory board has presented a lot of materials to the council. It's open for you. We're willing to help you in making any decisions you need to make, and I thank you for giving us this additional time.
Thank you very much.[1397.51][1397.51](APPLAUSE). Alderman Fisk. I promise, that's it. I don't care who else. It's forgotten to sign up.
I'm reading this for Jim Pomerantz. My name is Jim Pomerantz, and I own Bat 17 on Benson Avenue. I'm here to say simply that the food truck ordinance, as it is written, is a bad idea. The ordinance, as written, will grant permission for another business to sit across the street from my business and go after the customers that I pay a very high rent to have the opportunity to serve. We pay big rent to be in Evanston, and we pay hundreds of thousands of dollars to remodel our spaces, and hopefully appeal to the customer base. We expect our competition to do the same. There are so many things we cannot control in the food business. Most of us exist once a month and deal with snowstorms backed plumbing and blown compressors on Friday nights. We cannot control the loss of businesses from these circumstances. If the food truck ordinance is not intended to take business from the traditional and licensed businesses in Evanston, then the ordinance should specify that fact. If the basis for the new law is to provide options for special events, then state the usage limits. There are cool shows on television about food trucks, and there are many cities that have enacted food truck options, but most of them limit the trucks to one area and do not give the trucks free access to any city street. My request as an Evanston downtown business owner is not to allow the trucks downtown or within 500 feet of any restaurant outside of downtown. Specify one street or one parking lot where they can operate and compete with each other, and not the mainstay businesses. Allow them to operate on special occasions downtown, like holiday parades or special events where the streets are closed.
Thank you. That concludes public comment. The next item, I promise, is a joint meeting with the library board. Thank you all for coming. We appreciate your being here. Lionel, is there a problem?
No.
Okay.
Mr. Green is trying to make sign language, so I'm going to go ahead and read them.
Thank you, Rodney. Christopher, had you, do you still, you and Susan had said that you did not want to discuss the ordinance, proposed ordinance, tonight. You wanted to discuss it Wednesday. Is that correct?
We'll be, that is primary on our agenda. It's a new business on Wednesday, and we'll be discussing it as a group, and I invite, Alderman, I've seen many of you, and invite you again to our meeting on Wednesday night. That's where we stand with that, and it'll be a thorough discussion.
All right, so you didn't want to do it tonight? So, that leaves us discussing the questions that... Go right ahead.
I, right, you've got everybody's, if, you know, my Madam Mayor, you've got everybody's name here, and as they raise their hands, as we discussed, and vice versa. Can we just pass the microphone around, if that's acceptable?
Just fine. It is good if you use the microphone.
Right.
All right, so, city manager, you've had some answers to questions.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council, members of the library board, good evening. We have, starting on page 10 of the agenda packet, a memorandum with questions and answers. There have been a couple of questions raised about the questions during the course of the last several days. Madam Mayor, I guess the question for the council is, would you like us to go through each of these questions, or just those that have raised additional questions?
I suggest, I assume we've all read the materials, so I don't know that there's any point in, in rehashing all of the memoranda.
Okay, then, Madam Mayor, if that's the will of the council, there were three issues that had generated additional questions, and I'd like to just talk about those. The first is on the first page, on master page 10, regarding the council-
Wait one sec. Do you all have this? Every one of you? Okay.
So, this is on the first page of SP 1.
City manager, just point of order, Mayor. I understood tonight to be a discussion with library board, to just understand what it is that they're talking about doing, and for us to have some, some discussion. And I know, Madam Mayor, you had put out a letter, and you also submitted an ordinance, which most of us saw over the weekend. Tonight, there was extended presentation on, you know, support for this initiative, et cetera, et cetera. But can somebody just tell us, reiterate the purpose? Because I, I thought there was going to be some discussion, we want to know what's going on, we want legal to talk about the law. This, this where I thought we were going.
That's correct.
So.
Did you want to start it off, then, Lionel, instead of going through the questions?
Well, I wanted to just get the overview, and legal needs to at least inform us as to, while, yes, most of us are familiar with what, what has been proposed, some of us have even attended the hearings, a number of us have read some of the presentations from the library board, et cetera, et cetera. But what is the current status? What are we trying to do? What are people proposing to do? What is the authority of the council? Because if it is about consent, then it's really about the council considering whether or not to go that way. If it is not about consent, then we have to try to figure out what that means for us and for the, the residents of the city. So-
Did you, well, the-
We need to understand where we stand, and-
Madam Mayor, members of the council, members of the library board, we could certainly give you our best overview of where we think things are. I think perhaps the library board would be a better first stop with that. So, Madam Mayor, perhaps representative of the, the chair of the board, or a member of the board, could kind of give an overview where they think things are at. Certainly, Mr. Farrar and his staff have spent a lot of time over the last many months looking at these issues. Perhaps if the library- Perhaps if the library board made a short presentation of where they feel the issues are at, that Mr. Farrar could comment, opine, elaborate from perhaps the council's perspective. And again, there are a couple pieces of information we'd like to convey in addition to what was in the memorandum. So if that makes sense, Madam Mayor.
That's fine, if, Christopher, do you want to, go ahead?
Well, I'd like to thank Alderman Jean Baptiste. I think a proper commencement to this meeting is definitely in order. So to that and, in introducing us and contextualizing this, hope to tell you where we are with the library fund and the decision we made on August 4th. I spoke with, with you on August 9th during a brief citizen's comment about the chart we had coursed for Evanston Public Library. And since that time, we've held public forums, we've engaged in an open dialogue with the community. And as you can see, the community has strong feelings about this. I want to thank the speakers that came tonight, I know very few of them and it was very, very, very encouraging and humbling to hear their words of support. And I also want to thank you, this body, for the invitation to be here. On August 4th, the library board voted to invoke the Illinois Local Library Act, a model of funding that is used and has been available to us by many of our peer communities in Illinois. It's a process that was born over several months of deliberations by the task force for sustainable funding. And we decided on August 4th that we would invoke the fund as a way to ensure stable, sustainable funding for Evanston Public Libraries under the Illinois Local Library Act. You've all seen the peer community comparisons and heard and seen how other communities govern their libraries through elected and non-elected boards that are both, that are both compensated for by the Illinois Local Library Act. So we have moved towards a path, a fund, a library fund model, which is, the information's been presented to you. And that, that allows the library board of trustees certain powers over its budget. But our ultimate, if not immediate, goal was to stabilize the current situation. So if any of my other, my fellow trustees would like to speak to this point, they may.
I gotta point to the library board because I spoke so often about the North Branch. But since being on the board, all we have been able to do, someone asked if, well, what's your tenure plan? We haven't had a chance to even think about how to provide the best services for the community because we're so busy trying to come up with a budget that will work. And we've had so many cuts to services, which you all heard about. So, and from my point of view, it's such a small increase that we're thinking about. I mean, the taxpayers may pay $5 more or $2 more or $1 more or no more because there already is money in the general fund for the library. And I'm just confused why this has become an issue. Quite honestly, we're a literate community and I just really don't understand.
Thank you for this opportunity. My name is Gail Bush and I am a member of the library board. I am a resident of the 4th Ward, I live at 1415 Wesley and on Halloween, I will have lived there for 30 years. My professional life is as a librarian, so that's almost 35 years, in academic, public, corporate and school libraries. And just for you to know, although I am of course representing myself, I am the elected president of the Illinois Library Association, which has over 4,000 members and represents all types of libraries throughout the state of Illinois. And through that, I guess you'd call volunteer because you don't get paid, you know, I mean, it's beyond my job. I hear many, many stories from many communities around Illinois and different situations. And what I'd like to clarify is the, this library fund is the mode that the state has designated for municipal libraries to be funded. There are two types of libraries, two major categories in Illinois. There are library districts and they fund, they tax their own body. And there are municipal libraries that might be a village or a town or a city. And they all have appointed boards that have been appointed by their mayor and approved by their elected city councils. And they have the same responsibilities as elected trustees from those public library districts. Of those municipal libraries, they all, every year, invoke the library fund. From the representation that we have of the comparable communities, from the materials from the city, all of them are Arlington Heights, Skokie, Northbrook, Displanes, Champaign and Evanston, and this is for everyone else's benefit who don't have these papers, who sets the library levy, the library board in each case. The populations range, you know, close to what we have, Northbrook is half of what we have. I work in Skokie, worked in Displanes and worked in Champaign, actually, all in libraries. I will be specific to the collections because I think that's where people really see the library, is what's sitting on a shelf. So let me be specific. Over the last year, fiscal 10/11, the Evanston library collection will have a decrease of 21% in the budget. That represents $459,000. So comparable communities, Arlington Heights has 76,000 residents, we have about 74, 75. Their collections budget is $1.5 million. Skokie, 63,000 residents, $1.25 million. Northbrook, 33,000 residents, $830,000. Displanes, 58,000 residents, $890,000. Champaign, Illinois, 67,000 residents, $715,000. And then, of course, as I said, Evanston, 74,000 residents, $459,000, representing a 21% decrease from fiscal 09/10. I'd like to say just one thing about collection development because it's a part of my professional background. What happens when collections get decreased in this way is that the books tend to sit on the shelf because nobody wants empty shelves. They also seem to go hand in hand with a decrease in staffing. And one of the most labor-intensive parts of library work is what we call deselection or weeding. It's getting the books off the shelf that should not be there because the information is neither correct nor current. And what happens is we get a self-fulfilling prophecy where people go to those full shelves. They think the library has everything and the books aren't so good, they're not so new, they don't have such good information, people stop using them. And we see this nationally in, in research, in declining budgets where books sit on the shelf. The collections tend to not be adequately weeded, they look full to the layperson. And it's a very hard thing to see. It's easier if, I sometimes have to use the metaphor of a swimming pool. If we had an Evanston swimming pool and the state had statute saying if you have a swimming pool, if the town decides to have a swimming pool, then you have to keep the water clean and it has to be healthy and the water has to be full and it all has to be in repair. But, you know, we don't want to do it the way the state statute is and so sometimes we don't have the money and so, you know, we don't have all the chemicals, the water isn't all, everything isn't all in repair. You can see that and you're not going to go in that water, but it would be very visible. It's a harder thing, it's kind of nuanced, it's very difficult to see that in a library. So I thought I would just use that comparison that's used often. Another point that I want to make about the collection is that the other communities do know that our Evanston residents are coming to them. It's very easy to track where they go. And I often have to go to other libraries, I go to Willmet, I go to Skokie, I get books on interlibrary loan and they track the residents and they know that Evanston residents are coming to them. One point about research, I would like you to know that the majority of people who visit their local libraries, they do it for health reasons. People who come to their public library, they're looking for information about health. And it's very important to have current and accurate information about health. And my last point is, and this is a shout out to the Evanston Public Library friends. Those of us who are members of the American Library Association have just received our recent American Libraries issue that has all of the award winners from the last year. I know you have it. The group of friends that received the national award because of what they did in their community was to have raised $70,000 for their public library in a year's time. And our Evanston Public Library friends that rallied to organize themselves, they were not even in organization yet, but they organized and they raised twice that amount in half that time. And I think that what the city council asked of them was remarkable. And they went above and beyond what anyone can even imagine. So the award-winning, the best friends in the country did half of what the Evanston Public Library friends did. And I think it's just quite astounding. And I think because they did it, we think, wow, they were able to raise that. I think that they truly have done a remarkable job and have inspired this board with their energy and enthusiasm and commitment. Thank you.
I just want to say, my name is Susan Newman and I live on 1906 Lincoln Street. And given, if we did this ordinance, it wouldn't even include money for a full year of the branches. And I don't think we can ask the friends to raise another wad of money. I think it's unfair to ask them to do that. Thank you.
Alderman Wilson?
Thank you. I guess when I flipped my light on, I was more on the track of where Alderman Jean Baptiste left off. But my perception was, part of this was to establish a dialogue because we didn't have a dialogue. What I think we've had is a series of, for lack of a better term, a public relations battle that's perceived to have been back and forth. And at least from my perspective, I'm not putting anything, you know, forth. I have had positions consistently. I agree that the Evanston library friends shouldn't have had to go out and get money. Back when I voted to close the branch libraries, I voiced my opinion that we should not be in the business of charging people with going out and raising money for libraries. Libraries should be funded by the community and that's, I think that's an important community component. But since you all voted, the way you voted on August 4th, you've gotten a little bit of a taste of what we've been experiencing since January. There's a lot of, a lot of strong opinions both ways. People are very reluctant to come to a city council meeting and suggest that you close branch libraries. A lot of hostility results from making a public comment like that. I think it's difficult for people to come out and say that they're struggling financially and they don't want their taxes to go up even $15 or $20. Some people suggest that, okay, that's a couple cups of Starbucks a month. A lot of people don't go to Starbucks because they can't go to Starbucks. The problem is, it adds up and that's important to a lot of people. I can pay the taxes, I don't mind paying. I pay my library fines, I get a lot of fines, I bring my books back, it's okay. It's okay for me because I can afford that. But everybody doesn't feel the same way. So when the vote was taken, I think a lot of people, number one, were not expecting that to happen. Number two, weren't aware that it was going to happen. So I think predictably, there's a very strong reaction and very strong negative reaction. I think the most unfortunate thing that's happened is we've turned a very, very positive community building effort into something that's become a divisive issue. And this shouldn't be a divisive issue, it should be something positive. So my hope is that the mayor's suggestion to bring us together will commence a dialogue as opposed to, you know, a battle. We were provided with extensive, extensive information during the budget process. You're providing us with facts and information. You know, I couldn't believe the materials that our city staff put together for us. These decisions across the board were very hard. You know, sitting up here and deciding whether or not to close a dental clinic is very challenging. It's also very, very challenging for someone who personally loves libraries. I take my family there, libraries have always been important to me my entire life and all of us took that very seriously. I don't think there's anybody sitting up here who wants to close a library. I would be extremely surprised to hear that anybody wants that to happen. What I think we all want to have are the best services available. I get very upset and offended and I know this doesn't come from any of you all, but I get a lot of comments from people, we have the worst libraries, these are terrible, using words like eviscerating and very negative context language. That's picking a fight, okay? There's no reason to pick a fight. What we have to do is we have to work together and come up with something that works. Something that's financially responsible, something that's going to get us the best services that we can accomplish for our community. Using the buzzword sustainable funding, I don't even like that. Sustainable funding is just, it's a tax, it's a tax, that's what it is. Let's accept that. We have to charge a tax to raise the money, that's the way it works. That's how we pay the bills. So our concern, at least my concern, is you've undertaken to assert this authority. A lot of people in the community are concerned because, you know, it's that, you know, premise that the country was built on, taxation without representation. People are worried about that. They see in the newspaper, there's a maximum amount that you can raise it to. People say they've promised this, they've promised that. I don't think you've promised anything, I don't think it would be appropriate for you to promise anything. I think it's appropriate for you to have conversations, make suggestions and express your ideas. But people latch on to the most, to the most extreme comments, the most extreme views and that's what, you know, that's what gets the press, okay? It's exciting, it's interesting, it's what's, you know, interesting to talk about at the cocktail party, but it's not always the reality. So what I think we all need to do is focus on a factual discussion, get a dialogue going and hopefully we'll be able to accomplish something positive and get back on track to having an outstanding service and working together.
Go right ahead.
Diane Allen and I live at 330 Barton. I couldn't agree more with what Alderman Wilson said. I also couldn't agree more with Alderman Jean Baptiste's question about what is this meeting about tonight? Because quite frankly, speaking personally, I had no idea what it was that you really want from us tonight. I don't know how a dialogue can take place in a situation like this where we are very, very recently given a proposed ordinance that seems to be the exact opposite of what we've been trying, the point we've been trying to make in the community and, and I don't want to say subverting our efforts to provide excellent library services, but this board, to the best of my knowledge, is here to ensure that Evanston has a reasonably decent library. I don't know how many of you go to the library, but I am there all the time and I go to all the branches. And if you would just go into the library and start walking through those shelves and randomly start picking books out, and remember, library collections are not just books these days and that's another thing that we really need to address. I mean, our libraries today are internet-based, they have software that people can come in and use and take out. This is a changing world. We're trying to react to that. We also understand that all of Evanston needs to be served. No one understands that better than we do. How we do that, we do not know at this point. We've had many passionate supporters of all sorts of library systems. We know we need to do outreach in other parts of Evanston that are not being reached. We don't have those answers yet. Come to the meeting on Wednesday. We're going to be talking about, I guess, this ordinance. And we're also going to be talking about budgets that we have asked the library staff to put together for us so that we can at least begin some sort of a reasonable dialogue. But to sit and ask us, I don't know, I, personally, I'm just a little surprised, a little offended that there is this sense that the board is not a responsible group of people and that we are going to go out and raise taxes willy-nilly. No one has, and now I speak for myself, I've never said there's going to be an increase in taxes. And I don't know that anybody on this board can say... in taxes, and I don't know that anybody on this board can say that there is going to be an increase in taxes. I don't know. We haven't reached that point. So what is it that you really want us to discuss with you tonight, other than for us to reiterate once again that we are responsible people, we love Evanston, we want the library to be something that we can be proud of? It is a quality of life issue, and, I don't know. That's it. I mean, that's how I feel.
I want to thank Marty Lyons and Grant Farrar for what you have in your packet, which I think Alderman Wilson sort of begins to answer your questions about the dialogue. On August 5th, I received a letter of separation from the City of Evanston's council, and we've not been allowed to seek advice or counsel from the lawyer since then. This information in this packet is very interesting and a great start, because, you know, in this, we're talking about how other, we're asking you, perhaps you think that we asked you in the wrong way by what we did in our meet on August 4th, but we had a path that led to that process. And in hindsight, of course, every communication can always be, can be revised and done better, and I agree with you there. But we're asking for the library fund. We're asking for a model that's used by all of our peer communities, and we're asking you to work with us in the way these other communities work with their boards. And this information, which we've been wanting and asking for in various forms, is a great start, when we talk about how it all works and the chargeback and the library fund. And yes, it all comes from the same source, and it's property tax-supported, we all, we all know that. So I thought I would add that, and this was, for me, a very good start as well.
I think one of the things that I hoped to accomplish in this meeting is to be sure that you had some information that the council has that is not ordinarily given to the library board, that might help you to understand that there are, as Alderman Wilson has said, people in this community who do not go to Starbucks and for whom $15 is quite a lot of money. And one of the facts that I would like you to know is, and I'll always get the numbers wrong, but approximately a year ago, there were 300-some businesses and residences who had their water cut off because they could not pay their water bills. This year, the number was 420 or something. So it was a huge increase in poverty in this community, so that when people talk about how easy it is to pay $18, $50, $100 more a year, it is easy. It is easy for me, and it is easy for the people who are saying that it is easy. One of the things that I very much want you to be aware of is that there are facts and statistics that do not come to the library board that do impact people's ability to pay, and that it is taxes. It is not anybody's favorite word, but it is certainly taxes that would support the library, would support two branches. I love the branches. I have supported the branches for many years, and yet there are people who are being asked to support them who simply cannot do so.
Mayor, respectfully, each one of the members of the library board are long-term residents of Evanston. We live in different communities. We probably have hundreds of years, if we added them all up together, of living in Evanston and paying taxes and having many friends in diverse communities, and we all engage in lots of different types of life in Evanston. And certainly, we're aware and sensitive and appreciate your comments. It seems, respectfully, it seems curious, on one hand, to, we're often reminded that we're appointed no taxation, I think, was it Alderman Wilson, no taxation without representation, perhaps, because we're appointed and elected, although we have the same responsibilities as elected library boards. And of course, the city council is elected, and yet we are often put in the same category with making these determinations about the dental clinic, or the police, or fire, or water being turned off. We're, I forget what the percentage is, five, less than 5%, I think, of the general fund, the branches are .5%. We appreciate the dialogue around libraries, because we think any discussion of libraries is a good discussion, because it gets people, it gets it into people's consciousness. But please understand that we take our responsibilities very seriously. We do our homework. We study our materials, and we are so dedicated to Evanston and to the life of all of our citizens and friends and colleagues in Evanston that we are committed and dedicated to making the best decisions that we can for them in every way that we have possible to us. And we, of course, respect all the responsibility that you have to make very, very difficult decisions, and we do not make light of that in any way, and are very cognizant of the current economic times, and feel for that reason, that we still feel very strongly about the decisions that we're making. Our minds are open. We're moving forward. We appreciate where the discussion is now and are open to dialogue, but feel quite committed to the responsibility that we have being on the library board, in the same way that the recreation board is to the decisions they make and every other board is in Evanston. So thank you. I appreciate your comments, and we do have that in our minds.
Thank you, Alderman Jean-Baptiste.
I have spoken publicly about this, the decision that the library board made, because I'm still trying to understand the point of departure. This discussion here is interesting to me, because whether you organize, you know, the presence of your supporters here or not, the reality is, the voices that have come out, came out to express a particular perspective, they are trying to establish a paradigm that it is in fact the library board that is being responsible leaders of the city. And they use words as subverting, the mayor's proposal is subverting, you know, the initiative and the will of those who want the best for the city in terms of library services. You know, that's why I'm trying to understand really the relative authority here. And somebody talked about power. I don't think it's about power. It is about money. It's really about what do we have available? So if the point of departure, if it is that we have a lot of money, then we ought to distribute a lot of money to all of the different areas of services for the city to make sure that we serve the interests of our constituents the best way possible. If money is tight, if we're in an economic recession, then we have to be responsible in the choices that we make. So when we labor for months over the budget, and we debate with one another as to the choices that we're making, and yes, we have to wrestle with the mental health board, we have to wrestle with the dental clinic, we have to wrestle with laying off sanitation workers and accept proposals that focus around issues of redirecting the service delivery in order to save some money while we're laying off 20-year, you know, veterans of these departments. We labor with all that. And so I think that's the point of departure. And so when the board, in an attempt to provide the best leadership that it can provide, sought to, you know, did the investigation and came up with this method of trying to fund the library, the question becomes, well, who makes that decision? Okay? And I know that, you know, legal department, the reason why they retreated from all of that is because they perceived a power struggle that may ensue between the board and the city council. What are we going to do and how are we going to do it? I think the first thing is, what's the relative balance of forces here? What is going on? And that's why I've gotten the opinion from the legal department. I read the statute, and I know that the statute is not the end-all and be-all, because case law will determine, you know, how these statutes are applied, but it talks about with the consent of the council. If that is not the case, I mean, we need to understand that. And if, if it's not the case, what the mayor was trying to do was to reach some kind of middle ground, say, let's establish a floor in the budget, let's try to negotiate with an incremental kind of increase every year, understanding that there's a movement, there's a demand, there's a call for it, and recognizing the passion of those who are leading the charge and those who are following you. But we also, from the other wards, from the areas that have not embraced this perspective, have not organized to try to pull people out here either. I mean, that could happen, then we have a real, you know, confrontation all over the city, because not everybody can afford what you're proposing. That doesn't mean that we may not make that kind of decision, because it may be wise to make that kind of decision. But I think we have to try to determine, you know, how we move forward. Is it a question of an imposition? Or is it a question of a negotiated kind of process by which we try to serve the best interests of our constituents in all of the areas that are being served? Let me just add this one additional point about West Side and all the rest of those things. I'm not, and generally speaking, I try to really start from the point of departure of when the city was founded. You know, African-American community were here from the very beginning, but couldn't cross ridge, couldn't go to the libraries, couldn't go to certain schools. And every time we had to make a decision, we closed the West Side branch, we closed the school, we closed the hospital, okay? And what is left is that we've, what was been taken away is the history, is the legacy in many ways. So now, in the context of trying to provide best library services, you guys did say you want to try to fight for a West Side branch. You know, the reality is, we need library services. We've been needing it. And library services were given last summer when we had that reading room. So it is not always about the perspective of the experts, about the collections, about those assets. It is the services that are provided for the human beings that are here. So if somebody wants to get the best information, and they go to the library, to our library, and they don't find the best information, they go to someplace else and get the best and the latest, or they go on the internet, where information might be correct or might not. I'm not saying it's the end-all and be-all. But I'm saying that the library services, to me, is the call that I've been making over a long period of time, and I've not seen it coming from the leadership of the library or the board, okay? Last summer, after, you know, being on the council since 2001 was the first time, there was some overture. And I have not pushed for the West Side branch to try to mobilize my colleagues and stuff like that, because I recognize the financial burden of paying rent for a building over a period of time, of paying for staff. I recognize that it's an added burden on the budget. And so relative to the other choices that I have to make, I've chosen not to pursue that objective. So I'm saying that the assets are one thing, the services are another thing. And I'm not sure whether or not I'm hearing an argument for services other than, you know, what somebody will find on the shelf, rather than the outreach that's needed in the community. And again, I'm back to, what is the point of departure here? What's the balance of forces? Where are we? Is it a fight? If it's a fight, then we need to know what it is.
Susan, and then Alderman Wen.
Susan Stone, 1320 Wesley Avenue. Been in Evanston for 26 years. I'm an elementary school librarian. I've also taught at ETHS, Nichols, and the Piven Theater Workshop in my former life. So I've been around. I really, really appreciate your perspective, Alderman Jean-Baptiste, because I was going to speak to the very issues you talked about a second ago. And I had prepared a little, a little writing here. My feeling is, as important as our collections are, and they are important, at least personally in my heart, what's most important to me is reaching the very residents that can't afford a cup of Starbucks or whose water is turned off. That is why I am on this board, and I feel passionate about it. And Evanston has a LEAP program, award-winning program, where Evanston Library goes into daycare centers for daycare providers, and they teach children and caregivers and parents how to play with their children and connect it to books, so there's literacy involved. And as a drama teacher also, play is so important to our children who see nothing but TV. That's one program I heartily support. Another is community outreach. There's little branch libraries in a lot of the community centers. I think there's a little library at Fleetwood Jordane. There's one at Chandler, maybe. I don't want to get my facts wrong. We have little libraries, all summer long, there was places where you could take a book and not even check it out, and just put it back if you wanted to. There's all kinds of little things that, you know, we don't even realize. The staff is stretched beyond belief. To me, that's more important, I mean, it's very important to have good collections and be current, and to have digital resources, but it's most important to get people in the library. To me, there's two issues on the table. One is, is the board trustworthy? And number two, does Evanston Library need continuous upgrade and support? And of course, yes to both things, because libraries, what I tell my little library students, which is in an inner-city school, a low-income school, I say to them, here's a library card application. What else can you get for free? Because if you have this library card, you can go on the internet, at the library, or at home, or at school, and access an encyclopedia in Spanish or in English for free, not to mention thousands of other, a thousand magazines in one database alone. I tell them how old I am, that I had to go to the periodicals and ask for some little, you know, dog-eared Time magazine to be brought out from the back. And they're, you know, so a library card is everything. Are we trustworthy? We have been sworn in. I don't know if people here realize that. We are sworn. We are sworn to support and uphold our library, just as you are sworn. Therefore, to question whether or not we are going to be trustworthy in terms of tax-raising and raising taxes, we could turn around and say the same thing to you. And people do, right? Well, you're saying that to us, and the answer is yes. We live here. We know about the people. We live next door to the people who can't pay their water bill. And so I think we, you know, I'd like to continue the dialogue, but I really think we need to, you know, I would appreciate if you would understand how much we understand that no one wants to raise taxes. And lastly, if you had a crystal ball and you knew that we weren't, we were going to keep the general fund of the library where it is right now, for three years, let's say, if you knew that, would there be any of this discussion? Wouldn't a library fund be good, so it's a transparent budget line? So I think that, you know, there needs to be some trust here, that we're, that we're understanding. We research, we talk endlessly into the night, just like you do. And I do appreciate your inviting us, Mayor Tisdale, and I'll see you at the Health Club.
Alderman Wen.
Well, I wanted to thank you all for joining us here tonight for the discussion. And I think as I've been listening to everyone talk about why we're here, what occurs to me, and I think this, what I'm seeing is that, well, I had to summarize better when Lionel was talking, but we have overlapping responsibilities, but we have different charges. And I think that the problem that we are, I think the reason that sparked us to have the discussion with you is that, under the library fund model, you become a taxing body and with the purpose of maintaining one part of our city, whereas we are... and with the purpose of maintaining one part of our city, whereas we are the taxing body with the responsibility for the entire city. And without, and the library board can say, this is our charge and this is our responsibility, but really, you're inextricably linked with every other decision we make during the budget process because you all can levy X amount with, and you can disregard the fact that, I mean, I'm not suggesting that you will, but by, you can levy that X amount and not take into consideration the fact that we may have decided we will not raise taxes so that when your levy goes up, the amount that we have to spend on everything else has to go down. And so, you know, that's a logical conclusion from, you know, what the library fund model can look like, that if we decide that we are going to hold the line and not raise taxes, if the library board decides they are going to increase the levy above what it is now, that means we have to spend less someplace else. And that means we might end up having to choose not having a dental clinic, not having certain numbers of employees. I mean, if you all participated or watched or came to our budget hearings and the struggles that we went through, I mean, they were gut-wrenching for every single one of us up here. And, you know, I think everybody in this room knows that I am a very firm supporter of the library system. I have been a supporter of both branches of the library for the entire time that I've been on the city council, and I fought very, very hard for them. But I think that, I think the issue that's caused us to be having this meeting and having this discussion is the decision to move towards a library fund model is one that raises many questions for us and links us as taxing bodies, but with different sets of responsibilities. And I think the key for all of us is to have you all understand what that link means. And it does mean we have to choose about a dental clinic for kids. It isn't, you aren't operating in a vacuum. I mean, you can operate in a vacuum, but if you do, that leaves us making, you know, much harder decisions. So that's what I think we're here to discuss. And quite frankly, if we, I was not able to attend the meetings that, in August, where these decisions were made. I was only able to read the news reports and the minutes that were presented. So I, you know, I don't have, I only have the written record. Not everything that was said at that meeting by the library board gave me comfort as to whether the library board fully understands the link that was being created between our two taxing bodies. And another point is, unlike every other board and commission, you, which are recommending bodies to the city council, by adopting the library fund model, you are not a recommending body anymore. You are joined with us as a taxing body. And you are not elected officials, and you can say that you are appointed by the mayor, and certainly that's true, but we are so much more directly responsible. I mean, I get stopped in the grocery store. I get stopped in front of Nichols Middle School. I get stopped in the high school. Every single one of us has had the experience of having someone flag you down and say, you know, what's going on? I mean, I'm, we are all deemed responsible for the school taxes, and I can't tell you the number of times I've tried to, I've had to explain to people that we're not. And I think, you know, Donna, you know, excuse me, library board member Gerson, has, is the one member of your board who has voted on the city budget. And that's something that's really critical to understand, where the library fits into the entire budget. And I, every single one of us would love to have the resources that Skokie has, but we don't have Old Orchard. You know, it's that fundamental. I mean, we can look at how many people live in Northbrook and how many people live here. That's not comparing apples to apples. What you have to look at is, what's the population? What are the responsibilities of the municipality? What are their resources? If we had Old Orchard, wow. Every street would be so smooth. Every kid would have their own computer. I mean, it would be wonderful, but that's not really, we can't do that. We don't have that ability. So I'm speaking as someone who has fought every single budget year for our libraries and every single budget year for the branches. And what I'm trying to, my point in having, my hope in having this meeting is to have a much greater understanding between the board and the council that we are really have a common purpose, which is to have the best possible services in every department of the city and that you all become like us. You can't just be the library board anymore. Yes, that's your main responsibility, but it's much, much broader now that you become a taxing body. You are fiduciaries now, and that's really different than your original charge. So I think that's the discussion that we're trying to have, is to understand what does it mean to be a fiduciary to the citizens of Evanston and provide all of the good things that we would like to provide.
Donna, you're on.
When the discussion of the library fund model was initiated, I called a number of these other communities because I wanted to know how it worked. And it's somewhat different, I think, from the way it's described. It's not as if library boards rule and decide on some total levy and that's it. What actually happens in reality is that they do decide on a budget and then they talk to their city council. So while the statutory authority is greater than that and states that the role of the city council is ministerial, I think reality is that there is a negotiation because of that link, because of that sharing of responsibility of taxing. And so that there is a budget that's drawn up and then there is consultation with the city council. And I think that's what we're trying to do, to look for that optimum level. It's the same set of taxpayers. We certainly do not want to ask them to pay for litigation. What we want to do is to reach the optimum level for the library fund so that we can provide the services that are necessary with the knowledge and accommodation of the city council.
Next on my list is Alderman Fisk. Then you get, back to you after that.
Yeah, I want to be sure that you have an opportunity to ask your questions, so don't forget them because I think I'm going in a slightly different direction. Having spent many years sitting on the other side of the dais, I'm sensitive to the expertise and experience you're bringing to the library board, and I want you to know that we appreciate it. And I want you to know that we welcome your participation in this. And it's very important that we, as a community, come together on an issue that has been somewhat divisive. I want to try to stop that divisiveness with this communication. So what I am really looking for is, I'm looking for building consensus. It's very important that we come together as a community to do that, and I'm looking to establish that productive and non-adversarial dialogue. I really view public libraries as public schools for all of us. When we leave our formal education behind, the public library is a resource for us all. And it's a resource for us all in very difficult times. So the people who are traditionally underserved, perhaps in public schools, or get their education a little bit later in life, or are unemployed, or who are taking a new direction with their life, the one resource that is always still available to them is the public library. I do have some questions, though, about how your dialogue and your inner discussions have been going because we haven't been part of them. And so I just have three basic questions that I'd like to know right now. First of all, I don't know over how many months you were having these discussions, but was the library board unanimous in support of this taxing model? I'd like to know that. Have you discussed at all the possibility of closing the branches? And Attorney Farrar, I would like to hear from you about the legality and your opinion of establishing a separate library taxing district. But first, I'd like to hear from the board.
Okay, I can answer briefly to two of them.
Sorry. I just told it. Funding.
Right, okay, so it was not unanimous. Trustee Gerson, who actually voted nay, but has been a full participant in our forums, and Lynette Murphy, who is not here tonight. And then we were short one board member at that meeting, so it was a six-to-two vote.
Okay, can we know a little bit more about the nay votes and what the concerns were there?
Well, Donna's the only one here that voted nay, so she can take that with her. And the task force for sustainable, to the second part, your second question.
Was, have you discussed the possibility of closing the branches?
To your second question. But how about 1.5, which is what led us here, which was the, we established in January a task force for sustainable funding, and they worked over several months, as you know, and you've heard about that tonight, to make recommendations and talk. And there were two board members on that task force for sustainable funding. The branches, we certainly talked about the closing of the branches when this body voted to close them. And the, this body, and we, our discussions about a levy model and a fund model, of course, cannot be removed from conversations about the branch libraries. And the board imagines with current, and I think Gail can speak more to this, at current levels of funding, it's very difficult to maintain the branches at current levels in the FY, a 10, 11 budget for six months at the most, and with increases in personnel costs and many of the, and many of the things that have outlined to us, those have become more difficult discussions. But there are, there are members of this board that are strong supporters of neighborhood services and branch libraries, and we're not unanimous on that. And those are discussions that, as we move into the budget models that we talked about in our coming meeting, and as we look towards the fund model and what that looks like, that will resolve itself in a way. So, and Donna was the nay vote that's here. If you want to hear from her or you want to hear from Grant first.
Donna, please.
Okay.
Actually, when a motion was made to adopt the local library fund, I moved that we wait a year, that we do that in 2012. I was overruled. They voted on the other one first. So that was the reason. I think there's value in the local library fund in that the taxpayer will see the amount that they paid for library taxes, which is extremely modest, and they'll see the increases. So I was not opposed to it. I thought our timing and our manner of doing it was, I disagreed with that.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, members of the board, Grant Farrar Corporation Council, in response to Alderman Fisk's inquiry, I believe that really the statute, the Illinois Library Act, which has been cited to by numerous individuals tonight, really serves as the starting point, however, it's not the ending point. I'd also point out that, obviously, this act is pretty long. The hours are very late, and there's a lot of business left on the council's agenda. So to the extent that the statute is very detailed and also other issues are in play, with respect to the cited provision of the Library Act, it says what it says. However, there are the issues relative to how it's interpreted by a court and cases that have considered the act, which are not entirely uniform and consistent.
What kind of timeframe are we operating on?
What's the timeframe we're dealing with? Because I thought that the statute indicates that we have 60 days. If the corporate authorities approve the conversion within 60 days after the resolution is adopted by the Board of Trustees, the Board of Trustees shall convert the public, but that's dealing with district.
That's speaking to conversion of a public library into a library district.
Well, how much, what's the window of time we're talking about right now?
For conversion or for?
For action is their window.
Madam Mayor.
They've moved, they've moved, right?
Madam Mayor, John Baptiste, maybe I can take a stab at this.
Okay. And I also want to know that, I know you said this is the starting point, it's not the endpoint, but the statute right now says with consent of the council. So what is, what is the case law saying? Is it saying something different? Go ahead.
Go ahead to answer the consent question, then we'll talk about.
There are cases that interpret this particular levying provision. Some say that it's a mandatory action of the council to take the board's recommendation in setting the levy, and they have no discretion. There are other cases that take an opposite point of view. But all of those cases, really, none of them are factually 100% in line with these facts and circumstances presented by the City of Evanston.
And again, to really reemphasize, because certainly we have spent quite a bit of time over the last several months looking at this, the language is not crystal clear in the Library Act, nor is it really crystal clear in our own municipal code, because certainly there are provisions around municipal code. As some of the members here have indicated, over long periods of time in our neighbor jurisdictions, there's been sort of a practice established that allows for collegiality here. And I think that's a, I'm there seeing nodding heads of those more familiar with this than I am. So I think there is a bit of that where communities have perhaps interpreted these more general statements in state law to kind of fit whatever the local custom and practice has been. To answer the specific question about timing, as you all well know, tomorrow night is our first community budget workshop, so we are moving forward with our budget process. And one of the reasons we've changed the fiscal year is to more closely mirror the council's options regarding the property tax levy. And Mr. Lyons can correct me, but I think we've been through this enough times that approximately December 15th is the date that changes to the levy would need to be communicated to Cook County. So what is, again, my understanding of other jurisdictions is that the library board is aware of the budget process in the jurisdiction. There is a timeframe established for the library board to provide its input through any action it takes to the overall city budget process, so everything sort of comes together and that the levy that the city council sets, and which you have done regularly, is done, then the request from the library board is a part of that. So in our case, with our budget process, our plan currently is to get you a proposed budget for fiscal year 2011 on October the 8th and ask that the council, through its deliberations, be completed by the end of November. So the library board would certainly have flexibility to present to the city council sometime during that timeframe its recommendations. Mr. Lyons, I believe it's a resolution that has passed, or is it an ordinance that's passed to transmit, an ordinance that's passed to transmit to Cook County? That is normally a part of your final budget decision-making, so if you are adjusting the levy, it's done with the adoption of the budget. So if you are looking at adopting a budget, our hope is, prior to Thanksgiving, then any levy request from the library board would come to the council and be transmitted at that point. But again, the language in the Library Act is very general, and we really just have to look to our neighbor jurisdictions to see that they have come up with a sort of a practice that makes sense for them. As Mr. Farrar has said, from time to time, communities around Illinois over the last 20, 25 years, there have been conflict. And various courts have ruled in various ways on how to settle that conflict. The facts in Evanston are a little bit different than in those other cases. I think it's everyone's hope, certainly from a stats perspective, that we don't go down that road, but other communities in Illinois have gone that road and asked courts to better, more closely define the general language that's included in the Illinois Library Act. There's also issues of home rule, and home rule cities were changed in, what, in the 1970s. The Library Act is from 100 years prior to that, you know, and what's that dynamic? And that has been tested around the edges in Illinois courtrooms over the last 30-odd years. But again, there is no case that specifically points here. But again, the timing, I think, is now during the fall period. And certainly, Madam Mayor, if it's the library board's intention to, can talk about this further at their meeting and perhaps come back to the council, either at your next meeting or shortly thereafter, that's certainly within a reasonable time window. That's certainly within a reasonable time window for all parties to continue to have these discussions prior to any levy that would need to be, changes to the levy that would need to be transmitted to Cook County.
Just a few responses to Alderman Jean Paptis. We did not organize anyone to come, of course, with the organization that we have in Evanston. Certainly, we don't, we, we didn't call anybody. They organized themselves and appeared. So I understand how it may have seemed, but it wasn't, it wasn't our, we had nothing to do with that, with whoever showed up tonight. We have been receiving many emails and communication with very different perspectives, of course, as well. So we have received comments from both sides of the issue, I would say. In response to Alderman, when, your comments are very, very well taken, it does change the nature of the way in which the board, the library board to this point has operated. And I would say, very honestly, and I think a few of us are more experienced in the library world than others, it's a learning curve for all of us. And to respond to the city manager, there's a tremendous amount of cooperation and collaboration that needs to be set forth. And to the mayor, I appreciate this dialogue tonight, because I think it starts here, as Alderman Fisk said, in building consensus, because we need to certainly be on this path together. It is a discussion that communities do have. The library board might put forth that the levy is set, and then, as Donna has said, as library board person, Gerson, has said, many different communities, as you all know, communities communicate with each other in very different ways. I wouldn't go, maybe, I don't think it's quite as loosey-goosey, maybe, or I didn't understand all the language that, of course, attorneys use, but the statute is fairly clear. There is case law, of course, on both sides, as there is in anything in the state of Illinois. Where else do we need a more enlightened electorate than in Illinois? But I think that everyone, I know that everyone on the board, and hopefully everyone on the city council would agree, that we need to come together and to, to support the library, and to support all of the responsibilities that the, that the city council has. And we are here tonight in good faith, hoping that you will appreciate that we take our responsibilities very seriously. And we are, if, if we are on that learning curve, we're doing our homework, and we're doing the best that we can. We will have a meeting that everyone is invited to on Wednesday night, where we will be responding to a number of different budget scenarios that will be presented to us by the Evanston Public Library staff.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and Library Board of Trustees, thank you for coming. I'm really certainly glad you're here. Trustee Bush, I think I can call you trustees, isn't that the appropriate title? Trustee Bush, thank you for telling us about the recognition that other library friends get for half the effort our friends have produced. And I'm hoping that our library friends are in the running for that same recognition next time around, for their extraordinary fundraising here. I agree that our library services are woefully underfunded, and I agree that a library fund would be good for the library and for library services. I know how most, I can, I can, I'm pretty certain how most 7th Ward residents, what they would say about the library fund proposal, but what I don't know, and maybe what we all don't know, is what most of the Evanston community would think about the library fund proposal. Whether they think that it's good for them, that's my concern, is aligning the library board's good intentions about what's good for library services with what the Evanston larger community thinks what is good for them. How do we know that the library fund is good for everyone, for all Evanston taxpayers and all Evanston residents? I don't need you to answer tonight, because it's 11:35. Maybe this can be just part of your discussion with the library board, and I'd like to know how we determine, how we assess where the community is on this, not just library advocates, not just the library board, whose job is to look out for what's best for the library, but also as trustees, obviously, look out for the rest of the community. But I'd like to know, how do we get a sense of what the rest of the community feels about this? I'm assuming that this would be valuable information for the library board as you undertake deliberations about a library fund. But how do we get to that point? And I would encourage you to also attend the budget workshops, so that you can see the bigger budget picture that we will be wrestling with later this fall. I think you'd find it really interesting, and encourage you to attend. We have two. What are the dates, Mr. Bobquid?
I can almost say later today. Tomorrow evening, beginning at 7 o'clock here in the council chambers, and then on Wednesday, September 29th, at 7 o'clock at the Levy Center.
Mark the dates on your calendars, please. Thank you.
Alderman, do you have someone who wanted to speak? Go right ahead.
I just want to speak to just a couple of things briefly, one of them being, you know, how responsible we recognize our fiduciary office, and we certainly are very fiscally responsible. I'm fiscally responsible for my tax bill, which I love to bring every time I come to any of these meetings. And in, earlier, we talked about the pension obligations, and when I look at my tax bill, I see that 80% of my tax bill goes to miscellaneous schools in Cook County, which leaves the 20% that we talked about for the rest of what Evanston does. $40 million general fund, of which $15 million goes to police and fire, that's about 36% of the general fund that is obligated in that way, which means that we're doing everything else with the remaining money. Now, it doesn't take a rocket scientist, it doesn't take an accountant to know, there's a lot of work that needs to be done with the remaining money. And it has to be very carefully apportioned and very carefully scrutinized and spent. And so, if my words alone can assuage anyone's feelings, we are absolutely sensitive to that fact, that there's a lot of work that needs to be done with very little money. You've heard us say repeatedly that a change to the library fund model will not necessarily mean an increase in taxes, and I don't know how many times we can say, or the levy, because there is a levy now, whether we see it or not, there is a library levy. So I think you really need to trust us when we say that we are going to be talking about budget options, and that we understand that there is not a lot of money to be thrown around, nor are we going to impose some additional burden on the taxpayers. The Friends of the Public Library have done a magnificent job in pursuing their goals. But what you all need to remember also, and the Friends have heard me say it, and I know that they, that they know what I mean when I say this, they are not the library board. The Friends engage us in more dialogue than anybody else in this community. We can't get anybody else in the community apparently stirred up enough to come. We've had public forums in a couple of different locations. We seem to have been preaching to the choir at the locations, from my point of view. We have not had public response, you know, boisterous or passionate response negatively, other than, I don't know, maybe we get the odd email or whatever. We desire that dialogue with the general public, or with, I don't want to call it the general public, I am the general public. I mean, we want dialogue with everybody. We want it with you, and we want it with the community. But so far, the most dialogue that we've had have been with the Evanston Public Library Friends. God bless them in their goals and their desires, and we share many of them, and we don't necessarily share them all. We have not reached any decisions about a budget at this point. So come on Wednesday night, and you can listen to us talk.
Alderman Holmes.
I was just going to say to Ms. Allen, maybe one of the things you could do is to contact those of us who have regular meetings, and then you could really meet with some of the people in the community. I know I had a meeting, I think you had a meeting, a night before I did, with my regular ward meeting, and would have been a good opportunity to share with some community people. So make, maybe you can make use of that, and I think other people have regular meetings too.
Have you had any, I mean, has that been a topic of discussion?
Yes, it was. I was there, and it definitely was.
And have you encouraged those folks to, to come to meetings at, you know, board meetings or the forums? I mean, you're, you know, you're someone that they know. They don't know us necessarily, but I mean, has the encouragement?
And that's why I'm suggesting, maybe you could come. I have a, I have a meeting the third Thursday of every month, and you're always welcome. So, I'm just opening that up to you, as an opportunity.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, thank you.
Let's try for a few more, it is 11:30 at night. Alderman Burris and Alderman Wilson, I know you had your light on.
Thank you.
But Alderman Burris hasn't spoken yet.
I, I want to thank Mayor Tisdale for trying her very best to find a compromise, even though I disagree with the ordinance that she has proposed. I understand that you are, you are trying, and as always, being quite the diplomat. So I really do appreciate that. From what I hear from speakers that came up, and from what I'm hearing from the library group here, is that you're, A, either feel that the ordinance that's been proposed by the mayor is unconstitutional. I think a woman in the back and others have said it's unconstitutional, and you've kind of, your comments have been very negative and almost dismissive of that ordinance. So am I to assume that you will discuss this and make a vote on whether or not you will go forward with saying, no, we are rejecting that opening from the mayor, which has been so gracious? Or, and, are you going to do that at your meeting? And do you plan to then say, okay, we're not going to do this ordinance, we're definitely going forward with your vote from early August? I think that it's really important, we're having this dialogue, but really to say, what is the plan going forward? And that's when the mayor proposed this meeting between the two, and, and one of the first things I said is, what will this format be? And everyone kind of ignored me and said, oh, it's no big deal, it's not ending the Vietnam War. I think that was the comment. Well, maybe it is. And this format has not been, I don't, I believe, extremely helpful in setting an agenda of what, what we plan to discuss, what were the outcomes. There were no measurable outcomes here. It is just a back and forth of sharing information. I think that we need to come to a point of, where do you stand, where do we stand, and then move forward. Right now, we are still right back to where we started, and it's almost midnight. I have to go to work in the morning, and we still haven't gotten to the consent agenda. So it'd be really great at your meeting where you discuss this, if, if we have something coming out of that meeting that says, yes, we're going to go forward with this, so we can have a response. You clearly aren't happy with the ordinance those proposed. For once, you and I agree on something, I'm not happy with the ordinance either.
For different reasons.
Vastly different reasons.
Alderman Wilson.
Thank you. You know, a lot of it has to do with context. The public library friends organized their effort after there was initially, you know, discussions about closing the branch libraries. So we wound up in a situation where we, the council made a decision, the library friends undertook this terrific effort, and they raised a lot of money, and they really built a great, positive community project. But as we observe what goes on and what happens, you know, we also get copies of memos, and we see things that happen, and we get your minutes. So we see things, for example, like memos that you get from the library friends, which almost look like they're setting your agenda. They're making recommendations on action items. So that causes us to be concerned, you know, a couple of months ago. We see things in your minutes like an allocation of $5,000 for outside legal counsel, which makes us wonder, well, you know, what's that about? So that's part of our context, is it looks to us like you're gearing up for some sort of like legal challenge, legal fight, whatever it may be. And, you know, at least my personal attitude was, when we pass the budget, let's try to work out something that we can, you know, collaborate on. So I view that as, you know, as aggressive efforts, I view that as being, you've suggested that you're not the library friends, you're not tied to them, but the memos and the minutes, you know, make one wonder and make one concerned. I believe 100% that every one of you believes that you're doing what the will of the people of Evanston want. And I believe that in my award, based on all of the personal feedback I've gotten, that people chose to have the branch libraries closed. They didn't want that, but that was a choice that people felt was most appropriate in conjunction with the budget. So, you know, I had a ward meeting, and that was what the majority of the people said. That's what I hear at, you know, I heard that relentlessly, on the train, at the grocery store, at block parties. So some people don't agree with that. Some people say, do anything you can to keep them open. But the majority of the people in my ward are suggesting this one thing. So what it's turned into, it's evolved from a battle over the branch libraries to this. And when you have your public community meetings, they're supposed to be information sessions. And when I attend that, and I hear people talk about how the city council slashed the budget, and children cried, and all these terrible things happened, that's not information, really, as far as explaining what you're doing. To me, that's continuing this, this sort of a PR campaign. When you say, the library has to have a stable source of funding, it can't be, you know, tenuous year to year. I challenge you to find any department in the city that's overfunded. Everything is underfunded. You know, people suggest, okay, cut back on forestry. Okay, let's not trim the trees as often. Well, tree branches are going to fall down, and they're going to knock somebody's power line down, and it's going to set somebody's garage on fire. You know, if you, anything you name, there's a potential problem associated with that, some more serious than others. So that's why we have these concerns. It's late, I think you understand where we're coming from, I believe I understand where you're coming from, so hopefully we can just continue the dialogue.
Thank you. I don't know about all of you, but I'm exhausted, and we have a full meeting ahead of us. So I think this has been terrific. It's certainly gotten accomplished what I wanted to accomplish, which is, as Winston Churchill said, it's better to jaw-jaw than war-war. So we've managed that, and I think that's a big step forward for these two groups. So thank you very much for coming. Do you have any final comments any of you want to make?
At our meeting on Wednesday night, you've asked for, we have no, not intending on voting on the ordinance, it's not our ordinance, it's this council's ordinance. We are discussing that ordinance, and I've been asked to provide this body with, with information to gauge in how the library board feels, and that'll certainly be reflected as quickly as possible in the draft minutes, which will come to you. I invite you, of course, and we have a lot of meetings, you guys have a lot of meetings, as do we, to attend that meeting on Wednesday night. And I want to thank members of the board, we've seen at meetings before, we really appreciate that very much. In the end, this is not about the library, that the library board of trustees wants, it's about the library that the city wants, including all of you. And I know the opinions about things like the branch libraries, even among yourselves, this is diverse as it is on this board. So it is about the library that we all want, and I think we can work together to achieve that through whatever model. And we have our path and where we would like to go. This has been a great dialogue, and we very much appreciate it, and hopefully maybe see some of you on Wednesday night. Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you for coming.
Back? Oh, do you want to pray?
We're taking a five-minute break.
Five popular, sorry.
Get up. And these are frozen.
Is there anything I don't want to do?